All right, call to order. For those of you who are new, that means everyone needs to be quiet now. All right, thank you. All right, call to order the July 9th, 2019 meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to go through our agenda. Actually, the way it's ordered now, I think we're going to go through it in order. Okay, it looks like we have a couple that are continued. So Wellington Way, Messina Development requests for release of performance guarantee bond. See, I usually make you wait till the end. I usually make you wait till the end.
That's true. Hi, good evening. Stephanie Kiefer here on behalf of Messina Development. And we're here tonight simply requesting for the performance bond that was posted back in June of 2015 to be released. As you know, the subdivision was approved back in 2015. It's been completed. And this spring at town meeting, the roadway was accepted. The deed to the roadway has been recorded at the registry. And your package is a copy of that. And then also, once the plan was indexed at the registry, the street layout plan, that also has been supplemented to our filing. And at this point, the subdivision has fully been completed. The roadway completely developed, accepted by the town, granted to the town, and we're simply seeking the release of the bond.
Monica, any issues?
No, not at all. We've received our letters of support from DPW Conservation and Health as required by the decision. So there's no outstanding issues.
Okay. Can we get a motion to release the remaining bond funds?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's up?
Thank you kindly. Have a good evening.
We plan to. Okay. 630 Turnpike Street, Blue Cod Holdings LLC. Monica, this one's...
That is...
They'd like to continue until July 16th?
Yes.
So can I get a motion to continue that public hearing until July 16th, 2019 at the request of the applicant?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, continued. 701 Salem Street, 701 Salem Street Realty Trust.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Chen. I live across...
So we're not doing... We're going to... We'll get to... If you're looking to comment on 701 Salem Street?
Right, right.
We'll get to you.
Oh, that to me?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get to anyone who...
I thought we were for somebody...
We'll get to anyone who wants to make public comment. First, we're going to find out where we... Everything is on this, okay? All right. So Monica, want to update us on where we stand? This is a continued public hearing that was opened previously. We had... This is the second time coming before the board.
Yes, they were before us on our June 4th meeting. You'll see in your packet, there was a revised plan set, which is dated June 25th. There was also a revised stormwater report, also dated June 25th. Fire provided comment, and they said their initial concerns have been addressed or can be resolved with conditions. They did request that the applicant provide a 360-degree sweat path analysis, and the applicant has stated that they will have that as part of the next set of revisions. Let me see. The applicant's engineer met with DPW to discuss some underlying issues regarding the civil engineering. So that was... A lot of those changes are reflected in the plan as well. Conservation has stated that they're a little concerned about some of the planting. The applicant said that they would be... They had some non-native plants that could be potentially invasive, but the applicant said that they could replace that with something else.
So the type of plants, not the location?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. And any... What's outstanding in terms of comments from our departments?
From our...
Or peer reviews?
From peer review, they have received both the civil responses to the initial comments, but we haven't heard back from them. They said they will have those actually to me next week, so I can distribute those to the engineer. So I expect that should be the final set of comments. Also, of course, Conservation will weigh in and say if they're accepting of the planting plan. I can't see why they wouldn't be, but I let them weigh in on that. And just to let you know too, just to make it clear, the applicant's looking for a reduction in the number of parking spaces. And we'll get into that. I think we're covered with that, but we'll explain where we are with that.
Okay. Great. So gentlemen, please introduce yourselves.
Attorney Brian Vaughn from Smolak &amp; Vaughn on behalf of the applicant.
Great.
Phil Henry with Civil Design Group with the engineers on the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Attorney Vaughn. So why don't you... Feel free to tell us anything you want that's new, but I think highlight with the new site plans, anything that's substantially different. I know you heard some neighborhood concerns last time. Anything you've done to either address those or if you decided not to make any changes, let us know about that. And just any comments you have about the comments that we heard previously would be very helpful. After that, we'll go to further comments from the public. And I anticipate that we will not be voting on this tonight. Probably, hopefully, hopefully next time, but we'll see where the responses get after this go around.
Okay. I think just as 50,000-foot perspective, since the last meeting, Jim did do some more reach out, spoke to some of the neighbors. I'll let Phil walk you through kind of the technical revisions that he's made so far to address these issues that were raised. The one thing that I will touch upon, I guess, since it was raised by Monica, was the parking reduction special permit.
Are the green lights on there?
Yep, there are. The parking reduction special permit, the... It was included in the legal notice, so I think we should be fine from a legal notice perspective. Perhaps it wasn't specified as clearly as it should have been in the original application. If necessary, we can amend that, but I think we're covered with the notice. And there may be an additional filing fee for that, which we're happy to pay.
Okay. I think we talked about that last time too, right? Is it two less?
Right.
Spots? Yeah, okay. So yeah, we're aware of that.
70 spaces instead of 72.
Okay. Okay. So, all right. Great.
As far as... As far as just updating, as Monica had alluded to, we had received three comment letters. One from TEC on the site layout perspective, Horsley Wooden on the stormwater, and the bunch of department review comment letters.
I think you need to move it closer.
Closer? The... All the comments did not result in any substantial plan changes. There were some technical items that we either needed to clarify or modify from a stormwater perspective or a layout perspective. I guess the most substantial change was we redesigned the Abbott Street curb cut with ADA ramps, and we made that driveway a bit more confined to be in compliance with the local standards in terms of driveway width and ADA slopes and whatnot. But the site plan has largely remained unchanged. We feel that we've addressed the department comments with respect to water, fire, sewer. And then we are still waiting for TEC comment letters back to our response to comments. So I'm happy to get into any specifics, but they're really minor and technical in nature, and there's no substantial changes really to note.
Okay.
I think last time we heard that a primary concern was the parking of landscaping trucks. Have you done anything since our last meeting to address that concern from a number of abutters?
Can you hear me now?
No.
It is amplifying. So the question was, in the last time we had the hearing, there was some concern raised about landscaping vehicles parking on the streets surrounding, especially during lunchtime, as well as in the parking lot area. So I know, Jim, I know you were going to talk with some people about that. So yeah, any information on that would be helpful.
I can let Jim speak to that.
Whoever wants to.
With the... The one thing I would just say from a legal perspective is we are substantially improving the access onsite for parking such vehicles, as we noted at the initial hearing. And secondly, although I can appreciate the concerns of the abutters on the adjacent ways, they are public streets, so it's really beyond our control to limit parking on other properties to some extent. I mean, we can do what we can to improve it on our site and to, you know, any other, you know, non-legal factors that Jim may have to address it. But, you know, it's a public way. Key's Way is a public way. And, you know, we, as the applicant, have no control over what was essentially a separate subdivision. And any restrictions on parking in that subdivision really would have had to have been dealt with there, I would think.
Yeah, I agree with you that at one level in a site plan, you can't dictate literally every piece of behavior that's going to come down the road. But I would be disappointed, in fact incredibly disappointed, if we can't solve that problem, because I think it's a combination of Mr. Zanakis and the town and the design of the property that will resolve that problem. And I think one of the things that we've started to do in terms of site plan reviews is approve a site plan, but have you come back in a year after we see what's going on and if there's any problems, continue to fix it. I also think in this case that we should probably, as a board, talk to the police department about putting up some signage there, because I think collectively, there's a lot of pieces to it. But we really have to solve this problem, because that is one of the biggest things that I heard last time, and we have to fix it.
And I wouldn't disagree, or, you know, we could easily support the town restricting parking, but, you know, I guess the point just being that we're not able to ourselves put up signs.
Yeah, I know that. But if people come in at lunchtime and they park in the street, and they do it every single day, you could say, "No, please don't do that. Park in a parking lot."
Right. A little campaign once, you know, assuming this gets approved and it's all built out, and someone comes in, say, you see him on the street, say, "Hey, we actually have these spots here. Please come and do that." You know, that may not be written into a decision. I get it. But people are concerned in it, and I think legitimately concerned about that. So Monica, could we invite someone from the police department? Someone traffic-related that could maybe talk with us about that?
At a minimum, what I could do is at least get a statement on signage or any type of other improvements that would help to restrict. But I can also ask.
Ask if we could have someone just come in, because it's a problem now, and we may not solve it with a site plan. We probably won't. But I think if... The more we're talking about it, the more likely we are to make a dent in it. So, and I think face-to-face...
And it just wasn't Key's driveway. Don't recall the correct name for the street, but it was also just on Abbott as well, on both sides of Abbott. We heard one gentleman who owns the house across the street, has a fence. It gets beat, battered, and it gets trash in his yard. So it's not just localized to the...
Yeah.
Across the street as well. It's both streets.
Yeah, the other thing I would say is if, I mean, you're almost, or maybe even doubling the size of the building, which ideally will allow there to be more business and more traffic. So I think, you know, ensuring where everyone is actually going to park, not just that there are enough spaces, but where they're actually going to park is part of our responsibility here, to the extent that we can. So I think you've heard our concerns and will address them.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I think we'd all agree that it's, as Mr. Simons had alluded to, it's somewhat of an enforcement issue, but it's also our responsibility to provide some onsite parking and improvements. And I think we've done that by two major points. By simply just creating circulation around the building where there is not today. So with a landscape truck that's trailering or something in the back, you know, reversing in a parking lot is very hard. However, so therefore, by allowing full circulation around the site alleviates one concern. And also, we would invite those landscape trucks, because there are non-90-degree parking spaces provided onsite. So our hope and our design intention is that those folks would pull into the site and are able to do so now by 360-degree circulation around the property.
Okay. Could we get some clarification about the hours? Are they going to change, stay the same? I know there had been some discussion about that, so... The business hours.
I don't believe there's any current restriction on the hours.
Nope.
And I think any other licensing through the Board of Selectmen, through liquor licenses, is probably where we would prefer to have the conversation about restricting hours of operation.
All right, so I'm just not necessarily looking to restrict them. I was just asking if you plan to have them change or stay the same.
Could you come to the microphone, please?
My name is Jim Zanakis. I'm the applicant for 701 Salem Street LLC. And the question regarding hours for the market, there's no plan to change the hours for the market. On the left side of the building, where we hope to put a restaurant, the hours of operation would be proposed to be later than what our current hours are, specifically on, you know, weekend days, weekends specifically.
Okay. And that portion is more... Is dine-in, right?
I'm sorry?
It's proposed to be dine-in, right?
Yes, correct.
With people parking presumably in the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have questions or follow-ups?
Couple of questions. Well, last time we talked a little bit about cleaning up the entrance on Salem Street, because it goes from the pavement directly into the street. What did you come back with there? And we talked potentially about some low fencing. Where are you now?
Yes. So what we landed on was a new sidewalk along Salem Street. And the curb line and the onsite parking, they converge or diverge depending which way you're looking at it, but they diverge as you go onto Salem Street. And even at the widest part, it's about four and a half feet from onsite parking curb to back of public sidewalk. The onsite width of the landscaping is about six inches or a foot. However, we're improving that from the existing condition, where now the onsite parking is currently in the right of way. So I think we'd all agree that we're definitely improving it, and we're adding landscape between back, new back of sidewalk and parking.
Okay, so you are pulling the...
Yeah, we are pulling it back. What we struggled with was, and I know you had mentioned some low fencing, what we struggled with was installing fence on the property, which is only about a foot between property line and back of curb. We fear that almost immediately, or certainly over time, that that fence would be knocked down and hit by cars getting within the parking spaces. So our preference is to leave it open. And our hope is that to plant, you know, just loam and seed in that area and kind of create like an openness along Salem Street. So that's what we landed on.
So you're basically just talking grass, right? You're not talking about even any low shrubs there?
Grass, but with a curb. So where, right now, I think it's... The curb is either choppy, or there's some wheel stops that have been degraded over time. So create a clean edge with, yes, with grass.
You're showing three trees or shrubs on your plan.
Yeah, in terms of... I thought Mr. Simons was referring to any low-lying shrubs. But yeah, there are three street trees along the street.
And your constraint there is based on sort of, you need the 25-foot accessway, right? And in order to get parking at the bottom, and then parking next to the building, and then have the pathway, you're...
Yeah, essentially, we are main... So that front parking lot is built from the existing building edge forward. So we wanted to provide a requisite sidewalk at the pinch point, which is, we're only holding five feet. We'd love to hold a wider sidewalk, but we're holding five feet. You have your 18-foot parking space, 25-foot drive out to conform to local standards, another 18-foot for the parking space, which leaves that diverging landscape strip between curb and back of sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, so that is your constraint?
That's our constraint, yes.
The other question I asked, there was some discussion in terms of the building and the height of the building, and softening it up, you know, compared to the houses. Have you done anything there in terms of the design of the building?
Tom Galvin with Woodgrass &amp; Associates, where they are in the middle of the project. At this time, we feel that the height is appropriate for the area. If you look at the modern resident... Sorry about that. So if you look at the property right across from our driveway right now, their building is 28 feet tall. If you look at the two stories of the structure, the height above the street, and then also the roof line. So at 32 feet, we don't feel we're exceeding any height in the area. So we haven't done any reduction of the height of the building.
But yet, it's not all functional space, right? I mean, you have... You're basically going for high ceilings, right, in that part?
Correct.
So you're not doing it... You're doing it for, what, aesthetic reasons, not functional reasons?
Yes, as far as the interior of the building. When you do a market area, the height is also part of the effect when you come into a building. So right now, we're at about a 12-foot height, where the height of the wall will be, and then that starts our roof line. And you can see in the presentation here that we have a clear story above that to get natural light deeper into the space of the market.
Okay.
Yes, these are all architectural features. There's nothing happening on the second story of this. It's really more the feeling that you would have inside of the market space.
And remind me again, the addition is going to be the same type of material that's already there?
Correct. So cementitious siding, cementitious panels, and PVC trims.
Okay. All right. So at this point, we'll take... We'll take members of the public. Would it be possible to turn the podium so that people are more speaking towards the audience, so that everyone can hear? I don't care that people necessarily don't have to look at us, as long as it's still on camera. Just to know if that was possible or not. It seems... I'm just... I'm asking more for audiovisual. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I just want to make sure it's good for them. Careful, careful.
Just don't hit the projector.
Okay. That might help people be able to hear. Okay. So if there are any members of the public that have questions, or you can... Yep, now's your time, sir. So even though you're facing away, we'll ask you to introduce yourself and address any comments, questions towards us. And then if it's something that we can answer, we will. If it's something they can answer, then we'll ask them to answer.
Sure. Hi, good evening. My name's Wayne Chen. I live across the street from the proposed expansion of the plaza.
What's your address?
740 Salem Street. Right across the street.
Okay.
Right now, there's... We heard about the parking, the illegal parking. It's happening all the time. In front of me, there's a no-parking sign. There's many no-parking signs in front of my house. I have to fix the sprinkler head very often, because this truck is going to drive over it. There's some different kind of type of truck. So I don't think the put-up a sign, restriction sign, is going to work, because people will park there anyway. And it's a property hazard, because right next to the street is a 40-mile speed limit place, and people like do that all the time. Another thing is to talk about business hour. My house, because right now it's right across from the plaza, there's a headlight, it's on all the time, hitting my house all the time. Especially during the nighttime, it's like suffering in there. What happened right now is after 8:30, luckily, people will... The plaza, the business will be slowed down, so I can enjoy some peace and quiet after 8:30. Right now, I heard about there's a proposal for a restaurant, which is the hour is going to be late. So I got to live at a house that we see the headlight on all the time. So that's one thing, you know, I oppose this expansion. Another thing is there's noise. There's noisy, you know? They're going to bring a lot of noise, a lot of traffic. What happens to mailbox is people try to get into the plaza. Sometimes, people will pass the car to get into the plaza. There's a couple, two or three car on the street. They will hit my mailbox. So I fix my mailbox probably every few months, because we'll hit it crooked. So I don't think this is a good idea to have a business there, because it's a recent disa... Neighborhood. So, you know, I oppose this expansion.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So we will be talking with the police department to see what we can do. Again, it's somewhat outside of our jurisdiction, but we're going to stress...
I know the sign is right there, no-parking sign.
So it's more about... Right, it's more about enforcement. We certainly get that. Can you gentlemen look into whether screening will be in the area across from this gentleman's house? Just what kind of screening there may be?
By the way, nobody talked to me. I heard they talked to the neighbors.
Okay.
Nobody talked to me, contacted me or anything.
If you wait around afterwards, you may be able to get one of their information, and they may be able to reach out to you to see the headlight thing. That may be something that they might be able to work. I can't speak for them, but they may be able to work with you to help on that.
Well, that sounds like... If I understand it correctly, you're talking more of a building floodlight? It's a light mounted on the building, correct?
The headlight right now, even right now, there's a light, but mostly the headlights from the parking, the people parking there.
From the cars themselves, okay.
Yeah, and because the exit is right next to my house, which is right opposite. Right now, right across from the street.
Part of the point that I was raising was that having screening or a low fence right there, what it does is it does shield the headlights from going into your house. But if there's... You know, I mean, it'd be nice if you could think of any workaround that could resolve that problem. I know you have a geometry problem, but, you know, if you could alleviate that problem, I think it makes a big deal, because that's always probably run into in commercial projects close to residential, is the headlights into the houses, so...
Yes, sir, you're right. It's too close to residential, right? Inside a residential area. So this is really not a good idea, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you don't have to... For everyone, you don't have to raise your hands. It's just if you want to talk, just come up and talk. If there's a line, you can just kind of wait in the line. Okay?
I'm Stephanie Denunzio, and I live on Key's Way. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things that you guys just mentioned that were follow-ups to the last meeting and conversations we've had with Jim. And it was great that we talked to him. We appreciate that he came and he reached out and spoke to us. The first thing I just want to touch upon is with respect to the parking and the landscaping vehicles and the big, large trucks. It may not be a concern to you, because you don't live on that street. One of the streets is a bus stop, and the other street is also a bus stop. And there are children that walk up and down that street every day to walk for Manny Sargent. It is a concern. That street is extremely narrow. Those vehicles are massive, and they don't care where they park. They'll park wherever they can find space. The parking spots, if you can pick... Put the picture up where the parking spots are. They're car-sized parking spots for the majority. I think there were three, maybe, if I remember from the last time I looked at it, that were really going to be able to accommodate larger vehicles with trailers. They're car-sized parking spots. So are you going to allow the landscapers to cut across and park parallel on like five or six of the parking spots, so that they're parking on the property? I don't see how that's going to work. You're really not going to be able to remove everybody from the street. And I understand your restrictions on the ability to make some changes, but we have them too. Everybody is pointing their fingers at everybody else with respect to whose responsibility it is. The police point the finger at the town. The town points the fingers at the police. You guys don't know whose responsibility it is. I personally think that if you guys want this development done, this is an opportunity to make some changes that need to happen on Salem, on Key's, and on Abbott. And I don't see why you guys wouldn't be motivated to try and work with us to get those done. It seems like a no-brainer to me. And it is going to increase if your store and your restaurant is larger, the volume.
Can I ask you a question, just to get some context and size? Is it sort of at a peak time for trucks? How many trucks are there?
Yesterday, when I came up from Stop &amp; Shop, there were six trucks on one side. What, six, meaning truck with trailers? Because I count that trailer as almost like a vehicle. So let's say there... So let's say there were six between landscaping vehicles and other type of commercial vehicles on the left coming down Abbott towards Salem. And there were two on the right. If there are people turning from Salem on this side and turning from Salem on this side and I'm coming down Abbott, it's like you just kind of have to go really slow because you don't know who's coming in what direction because you can't see. And it's, it ranges for hours. It could be from 11:30 to 2:30 at its worst. But there was a period of time, about a year and a half ago, or two summers ago, where the trash trucks and the landscaping vehicles would stay and they would eat. And their trucks would be there for more than an hour at a time because I would watch.
And what are the parking restrictions there, if any?
On Abbott?
On Abbott, are there any?
I don't think there are any. I mean, they've made the space and smoothed it out next to Dennis's property where the fence gets banged in all the time to try and accommodate some of the vehicles. But there's a stop sign there, so they park up to the stop sign. And they do the same on Keys Way when I don't go out there and tell them to move. They park up to the stop sign. There have been times when I can't back out of my driveway on Keys Way because they double park on both sides of Keys Way. And I understand that Keys Way is a public street, it's a dead end, and they all use our street to turn around and park so that they're facing out. It's, it's a lot. You don't live there to know it, but it's a lot of activity. So there's got to be some consideration around how to accommodate those vehicles. I don't think the current parking lot design is gonna be able to fix all of those parking issues, I just don't. And the parking signs don't always work, and neither does it when I go out and yell at them, so. And I do have a police officer that we've worked with, all of the neighbors have. So if you guys want us to contact them, or he, I'm sure, I think he lives off of Salem Street, so he's very familiar. My next concern is around the hours of operation. I, I know what Jim would like to do, and I understand where he's coming from. But I also know that this is in the middle of a neighborhood, and there's not a lot of situations like this around here where there's literally a restaurant put in the middle of a bunch of homes. And there aren't many restaurants in this town that are open past 10 o'clock. There's only a couple that I'm aware of, and they have pretty large bars in them. And my view is if it's a restaurant to accommodate families sitting down, I don't see why it needs to be open till 11, 12 o'clock in the morning, unless it's really to accommodate for a bar, in which case, why do we want a bar in a neighborhood? It doesn't make any sense to me. The landscaping is still an issue for me because on the other photo where you can totally see the parking lot go smooth to the sidewalk, what Wayne was saying is completely true. We talked about the fence, not so much just for separation of property, but it was to hide the headlights. Because the headlights of the cars that are gonna park on the Salem Street side, I don't know. The one, where the front grass is in the walkway, all of those cars that park there at night have their headlights shining towards Wayne's house, the house next to it, and actually through to ours. And sometimes people leave their headlights on to go in and get coffee, or they're talking to their friends outside, or they're all meeting to get together to go to a party and they park their cars there until midnight. And then they go back and get their cars and their headlights go on. Sometimes their alarms go off by accident, leave them going. So the shrubbery or the fence was not, was more so to protect from the headlights, I think, when we talked about it last time. And I don't see, I don't understand from a size perspective all of those details, but I know like the Starbucks Plaza, they have the fence and the shrubbery. And it doesn't seem like theirs is getting kicked in by cars. So I don't know how, we can't try and figure something out there. And I understand that you guys are concerned about your friends, but the poor neighbor's fence is getting hit all the time by your customers, so I just find it funny. The other thing was, I think when we were talking about the, the height of the building, just to kind of touch on that, because I know he's not here tonight. I think his concern was when you guys graded the property to go up on an incline, like up towards the end of the building. He knew that that meant the cars were gonna be parking higher, and those headlights were gonna shine into his bedroom windows. Which was another thing about the fence and the shrubbery, to try and protect that barrier for headlights. I think that was what he was referring to. But I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Foster, and I'm representing James Greer for 710 Salem Street. He was not able to be here tonight. And he just wanted to convey some concerns that he had. He's at 710 Salem, which is right across the street, directly across the street from the house that's going to be torn down. And one of his main concerns is, so the current driveway that's there now is going to be moved. I don't know if you can bring that up and show with the driveways, the entrance to Takies is now, and where it will be in the future. The driveway's going to be, the entrance, you see that it's in and out, is right there. So that, that entrance is going to be directly across from 710 Salem Street. So his concern is obviously a traffic jam right there in front of his driveway. So he's requesting, I don't know if it's possible to move it over a couple of widths at all. I don't know if that's something that could be considered.
So, and one of the problems is if there are houses across all of it, that it's gonna be in front of somebody's?
No, it's not. The driveway's not across from anybody's right now. He's, he's looking to just have it in between so that there's not a jam right in front of his house. Or to have one entrance in and one entrance out, like they do at Butcher Boy. So that there isn't, because now, I mean, they're, I guess, you know, the people are jamming on their brakes and, you know, you know, stopping short as it is right now with the, where the entrance is. So anyway, he's just requesting that, so that it's just not directly in front of his driveway, which is where it will be, that's all. So I didn't know if he could move, just move it over a couple of widths, just for safety's sake. And he didn't know if there was any traffic impact study done? Has that been?
I believe so, I believe so, is that correct? Have we had a traffic study?
Not a full traffic study. There was like a, a short version of, of one, not like an in-depth one.
Because currently, the, sorry, the entrance is not in front of anybody's, directly in front of anybody's driveway.
So a traffic study wouldn't address where?
Other people's driveways?
No, it wouldn't address where the entrance is, it would just address this type of use, how it's expanded, how many more cars you could expect.
Oh, I see, okay, so he's, he's just requesting it be moved down a couple of widths.
Okay, understood, we'll, we'll ask about.
You know, just, just so that it's not directly right there, so that he can get in and out of his driveway.
The review of the, of the driveway location was a department review, but also a civil peer review, just, that was mostly for safety's sake.
And then his other concern was just the skylights that are in front of the building. If you could go back to the, the elevation again that shows the front. I know that they would, he said that they would like to get obviously some natural light in from the skylights. But they are up, they're elevated 30 feet in the air. So he's just wondering if they could put the skylights in the back of the building to let natural light in, so that he's not having, again, more light pollution all the time. And also, it actually, if they were in the back, they would be facing southwest, which would give actually more light. So his concerns are light pollution. So I don't know if they, if there's any way to put the skylights in the, in the back, on the roof in the back.
Alright.
And then the other, the light posts that are in the parking lots, what's the height of those, do you know? He was thinking they were about 20 feet high?
Sounds right.
He's wondering if they could be put lower just to, again, to prevent light pollution.
So we did have a photometric plan, which will require the applicant to live up to, to not show light spillage. And especially across, he's across the street, right?
Yes, he's across the street.
Yeah.
Anyways, do you know how high they are?
I believe that they were.
I believe they were six, 16. I, I don't know for sure, but I believe they were 16. I could look that up.
Yeah, he's just wondering if they could be lowered a little just to prevent, you know, light pollution, dust, 12, 12 feet or something.
Yeah, they need to be high enough to actually produce enough light so people can see in the parking lot and.
Right, and so he was also just concerned about the hours of the facility, which we already talked about, you know, till midnight. So anyway, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? So we're not gonna be voting on this tonight, we still, you guys still have some, we still have some work we need to do with the peer reviewers, right? So I think for me at least, and gentlemen, please jump in, and if you have any questions or comments, please jump in too. The, any screening, I think, has come up a couple of times, and I think that can really go a long way towards helping the situation with the neighbors and to really satisfying the board about the impact that this project will have in not being a nuisance or a detriment to the neighborhood. I do have some concerns also about the hours of operations, so I'd like some more clarity on that about what's gonna be happening, when and what's proposed. Because I do also think that that has an impact on the neighborhood and the expansion to a different type of use and a bigger building. If we're going to be saying that's okay, I think looking into the hours of operation and some more solidity on that is important. The parking, I, I, anything else you can suggest would be helpful, but I, I think the point is well-taken that in a site plan, there's only so much that we can do. But I, anything more outside of the general scope of the actual legal findings would, would be helpful. And I would like to see if we can get someone from the police department here, and we'll see what we can talk about maybe with our board of selectmen to see if there's something we can look at. It may have to be something that we study, you know, it's not like we can just go and put up signs and say no parking. But if there's enough, if this is going to potentially happen and expand this use, maybe it's something that should be studied and figured out, maybe there should be 30 minutes or one hour parking on Abbott and some, some, some more stringent enforcement. But we, we need some more data on that, and it may be nothing that we can put into a decision, but we can at least get the process going. For me, those were the kind of biggest concerns. John, anything else?
No, I think, I think you've hit them well. I, just one observation related to the screening and getting the room in the, in the, in the front. Is there any way you could slide the building back like a foot or two, or make the sidewalk in front of the buildings a little bit narrower to grab a couple more feet so that you could put more effective screening? I, I just don't know what you're dealing with in terms of all your constraints.
The, the short answer is, is no, because, and here's why. It's because the critical distance is the existing building that's remaining. So that, that's the short answer. However, we, we will go back again and we will revisit the planning. I think we've heard you loud and clear, and you know, if that's one of the last items that we need to address, we, we will talk about it internally.
Okay, great. How long do you do, does everybody need to come back? So we have meetings on the 16th and then a meeting on the 30th?
Yes.
So, do you want to be ambitious, or do you want to go for the 30th and have answers?
16th would be next, next week.
Either next week or three weeks.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the remaining items are, we have a few things to, to address from, from this public hearing. We have to address the peer review comments, although I would expect a, a clean letter or near-clean letter to, to come back. And then obviously on the town's perspective to draft the decision. So I think those are the lead items.
So it may make sense, I, I think if we shoot for the 30th, I think we have a much better chance of actually having a draft decision and being able to vote on something. Next week, I think, would be ambitious. Especially we have a lot of other projects that we're trying to move forward at the same time. So, want to say July 30th, comfortable with that? Okay, July 30th, so we'll continue this public hearing until July 30th.
I guess, I guess, just in the spirit of efficiency, I wanted to answer just a few questions.
Oh, great, yes, please.
So the, the, the site lights are 20 foot tall to the, to the luminaire. And, and I just want to be clear that the performance standard on, on photometrics is that the foot candle readings are zero or near-zero at the property lines. That is not the same as if you're looking out your window 100 feet away, you will be able to see a light. It's, it's, that light should not see you, and, and that's what we think we've accomplished. So I think there's a distinguish, I think we need to make that distinguish, we have to distinguish that. And then secondly, in terms of locating the Salem Street driveway curb cut, that proposed curb cut is in almost the exact location of the existing driveway at 695 Salem, which is the residential driveway. We agree that, that the intensity of that driveway will, will obviously increase because it goes from residential to non-residential. However, the, in, in locating that driveway, we wanted to accomplish two things. A, it lines up with the internal driveway associated with it on the west side of the property so that folks or patrons coming into the site, commercial or, 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 or delivery trucks, can, can circulate around the site without making a number of S-turns. And then also locating that driveway as far away from the Salem-Abbay Street intersection as possible. And then, and then lastly, I would, I would want that driveway opposite of, of, of a, of a residential driveway. Because if we were to shift that a few, I don't know what a few widths are, but I'm assuming a few widths towards the intersection, then what, what you would be having is, you'd be having opposing left-hand turns coming out of that driveway, which is not ideal. So you actually want driveways either lined up across from each other or a few hundred feet away. So I actually think, considering all the factors on site, I think, I think that driveway is appropriate. And the fact that the peer reviewer did not comment on relocating that, I think the location of that driveway is sufficient as is.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, continue to July 30th, 2019. Okay. And Monica, our discussion item has been continued to August 20th, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. Alright, so let's go to new public hearings. We're gonna open up two new public hearings. The first, Four High Street, RCG West Mill, MALLC, application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81O, 81T, and 81U, and North Andover Code, Section 255-5.5, to subdivide map 54 Lot 1 and map 53 Lot 25 into three lots and to create a new subdivision road. The proposed subdivision is located within the downtown overlay District A Historic Mill area, underlying industrial SIS, residential four, and general business. Application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81O, 81T, 81U, and to subdivide map 54, 53 Lots 1 and 25 into three lots in the downtown overlay District A Historic Mill area. The second public hearing, Four High Street Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., application for Sub District A Definitive Master Plan Special Permit in accordance with the Town of North Andover Zoning Bylaw, Section 195-18.2. The applicant proposes the construction of a market-rate rental multifamily residential community to be known as Avalon North Andover, consisting of a total of 250 Studio 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units to be contained within two separate five-story buildings of approximately 103,897 square feet, approximately 171,888 square feet, along with an outdoor pool, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage, and other improvements to be located on approximately 9.44 acres of land. Project is located within downtown overlay District A Historic Mill area, underlying industrial S, residential four, with all buildings proposed within the boundaries of underlying IS district. Okay, so could we get someone from the applicants? Okay, so before we get started, I'm gonna just kind of give a overview of how this process is going to work. So these are two separate applications for the same property by, at this point, separate entities. The one is for a subdivision, so that's to subdivide a parcel owned by, currently by RCG West Mill, MALLC, into three different lots and to create a new subdivision road. The second public hearing is for the special permit, and that is the construction of the two multifamily residential communities with the accompanying amenities described. We are going to be talking about both of these. We are going to be talking about both of these together. Anyone who wishes to comment can comment about them together. If you want to make a specific comment about special permit, that's fine. If you want to make a special, specific comment about the subdivision, that's fine. Otherwise, we'll take it that your comments are regarding both. What will happen tonight is that we are going, we are opening the hearing. We will not be voting on anything tonight, okay? There will be no votes taken. We have a lot of work to do. We want to hear from the applicant. We want to hear from everybody. Our town consultants have a lot of work to do, so this will not be ending tonight. This hearing will be continued to another date, okay? Tonight, we are going to hear first from Monica, our associate planner, about where we are, stand currently in the process. We will then hear from the applicants about what they're proposing. The board will have a chance to ask them questions, and hopefully we'll get answers regarding those. Hopefully, some of those questions will be items that people in the public have as questions and will have been answered. If so, that you don't have to come up and ask the same question if it's, hopefully, if it's been answered. You can if you want to, but there are a lot of people that want to talk, so you don't have to. After the applicants, after that session is done, that discussion, any member of the public that wants to speak can come up and speak. We are also going to go through the special permit criteria as well as the subdivision criteria just to give anyone who wants to speak a sense of what we're looking for in terms of the decision that we have to make, okay? As I said, anyone can speak, it's most helpful if you discuss the idea, how you, questions you have about the project, great. And if you have points about impacts or questions about impacts that they relate to the criteria that we're dealing with, okay? So, that's what we're going to do. So, let's start. Monica, why don't we go through the criteria, okay? So, this is Section eight-ten, Regulation of New Subdivisions. A lot of this comes from the Massachusetts General Law. So, this just, this is the division of the property into three lots. This is a lot simpler than the special permit, okay? So, here, here for everyone who wants to see is the criteria. Subdivisions, if appropriate, can be conditioned on, and generally, we do place conditions on subdivisions. One of the big items that we'll talk about is the road and the layout of the road and the quality of the road. That's generally one of the biggest issues with subdivisions. Other issues include access, how people are going to go get in and out from these lots to make sure that that's appropriate and that all lots are legal once, once subdivided. This is the approval process for a subdivision. Again, you can find this Mass General Law, Section forty-one, eighty-one U. Go to the next, okay? This next slide is to special permits, okay? So, they've applied for a special permit. As I stated, that's for the construction of the residences and the accompanying amenities. Multifamily is allowed in this area via special permit. If you could go back once.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, one slide, and it's my understanding, we'll talk about whether or not this requires any variances. It's my understanding that the project as proposed currently does not require any variances in that it meets the zoning, albeit meaning a special permit. All right, next, Monica. So, some of the things that we're going to be looking at. That the site is specific, is an appropriate location for this use. The use is developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and that, that it's in harmony with the bylaw. Talking, we'll talk about setbacks, screening, how it appears, if that's consistent with the area and other buildings, size, scope of the facilities, parking, traffic. This is talking about the, the Subdistrict A in which they are located, some of the criteria that we're going to look at for that. And, and more as to that. We can, we can go through this, Monica.
Yeah, this is, there's a lot of criteria that you would go through.
We're not going to go through all the Subdistrict A ones, but that's just generally what we're, so.
All this information is, is available online for your viewing pleasure.
Right, so if you look at the agenda, if you want to go look at this, if you look at the agenda and see the sections that we're talking about and the different districts that we're talking about, all of you can search that. Okay, so why don't we start? Monica, where are we at in the process?
Okay, and again, there are five, four different permits that, that the applicant has applied for. We just went through very quickly some of the criteria for the definitive subdivision, the Subdistrict A definitive master plan special permit at the Subdistrict A Historic Mill areas and the, and permits for multifamily dwellings of seven or more units. The applicant has submitted actually plans. They've submitted a full traffic study. They've actually submitted a fiscal impact study and community impact study as well. All this information has been provided for both department reviews. That's gone to health, building, conservation, as well, as well as police and the school department. So, each one of those departments has weighed in. The traffic study has been submitted for, for peer review. They'd like to know if you'd like to do them to do an in-depth peer review of that. So, that's something you can discuss tonight.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you. The school department has provided a comment. They will be appearing at our next meeting to discuss more in detail about the impacts on the school, the school department.
What date is that?
That would be the, the sixteenth meeting.
Okay, so, will it be Assistant Superintendent Mealy?
Yes.
So, for anyone who's interested, and feel free to comment, but I know, so two things. One, we've received a lot of emails about this. All the emails that people have sent in already have been made part of the record and part of the packets. So, we've all reviewed them, and they're all part of the record. They've also been provided to the applicants, so they can review them as well. Some concerns have been raised about the school. We'll discuss that tonight. We'll discuss that at future meetings. Assistant Superintendent Mealy will be here on the next meeting at the sixteenth, so we may defer some questions for his expertise on that, okay?
DBW has weighed in as well. In fact, they met this afternoon with their engineering team to review some concerns that they had in regard to the engineering. In particular, there are concerns about the intersection directly, it would be the Prescott Street intersection. They also had some concerns about just the location of some of the utilities as they were off, so they clarified that this afternoon. They also discussed some of, some of the, some of the underlying traffic. But then again, you'll have the peer reviewer comments hopefully at some point to, to review those in detail. Conservation's reviewed the project, and in fact, they filed for an NOI with Conservation. There's, right now, they're on the schedule for tomorrow night's meeting to open that hearing with, with them as well. Building has weighed in. They've expressed some concerns over the shared parking of a hundred cars, some of the, some of the density related with that. And you, you saw that in your, in your comments, in your, in your letter as well. So, again, we just went through our initial comments through department review and, and the peer reviewer, and this is the first set of, of, of reviews.
So, for, for everyone out there's information, so some people have also raised concerns about wetlands on the property. We are aware of that. The project will be going to the Conservation Commission for them to review that. So, that's in the process as well. Okay, so I think that's, we'll turn to you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. David Gillespie from Avalon Bay Communities. With me is Ed Bradford from the Architectural Team. He's our architect. We'll also have Brian Huntley from Time Bond, who's our engineer, speak tonight. We also have other members of our team here, attorneys and other engineers and such, to answer questions as appropriate. Thank you very much for having us here. Very excited to be in the Town of North Andover and propose this project to you. This, this project obviously has been, the redevelopment of the Mills has been underway for quite a period of time. And we are just the next step in the, in the re-divisioning of the Mills project, so. The next slide, Monica. First, just some quick background on Avalon Bay. First, Avalon Bay, we're a national apartment development company and owner. We have been in Boston for twenty-five years. And over those twenty-five years, we've consistently had a project under construction. So, you will find them in neighboring communities all around North Andover and Greater Boston. We have two hundred and eighty-eight communities nationally and forty-one in Massachusetts. We currently have four projects at some stage of construction. And the one thing about Avalon Bay that I think gives us an advantage over our competitors is we have our development group, our construction group, and our management group all in-house. So, the commitments that I'm making tonight, or I'll make over the course of this process on behalf of Avalon, will be executed on the construction side by Avalon Bay Associates. It will be managed in the actual operation of the community by Avalon Bay Maintenance and Leasing Associates. So, I think it gives us a big advantage, and we have a track record of successful developments throughout the Commonwealth. These are just a few to highlight, some of the projects that are underway recently. Top left is Avalon Marlboro, which Phase One was completed several years ago. That was three hundred and fifty apartments. We've now been opposed, proposed a second phase, which has just started construction for a hundred and twenty-three additional apartments. To the right of that is Avalon Sudbury. That was recently completed. That's two hundred and fifty apartment homes that we built in the Town of Sudbury, adjacent to some mixed-use amenities similar to the Mills. Bottom, bottom left, Avalon Saugus, the Hilltop Steakhouse site. It's under construction right now. Two hundred and eighty apartments and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail. We're developing both the retail and the apartments. And bottom right is Avalon Hingham, second phase of that development. Two hundred and thirty-five apartments were completed in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and then we're now building a hundred and ninety apartments that are under construction right now.
Can I ask you two questions?
Sure.
So, on the Avalon Saugus, are the, is the retail separate from the apartments, like separate buildings or?
It's a separate building. Yeah, there's twenty-five thousand feet right on Route One. And then as you go past those buildings, we have three residential buildings behind those.
Okay, got it. One more, and then Doug, Doug. Can you give us a couple, like two or three Massachusetts Avalons that are currently built and have been for, that, that might be comparable in size and scope to this?
What jumps out to me first is probably Hingham. I know it's a bit away, but it is a mixed-use development that was master-planned over time and built out in phases. That would be one that I would propose, has sort of the size and scale. Avalon Sudbury was, you know, permitted together and then built at all the same time, but it has a multiple, mixture of uses, not integrated, but really multiple uses on one piece of property, which is similar to what we're proposing here. I would say any of these four are appropriate, and I'd be happy to take board members to any of them at, at their convenience.
There's a follow-up question on that. For the Sudbury and the Hingham projects, how many acres?
How many acres for each of them? I think our Sudbury site was seventeen or eighteen acres. I can get back to you with more detailed information, and Hingham was built in two phases. I don't know off the top of the head.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the density and scale.
Sure.
And proportion to what you're proposing here.
And even if you could come back, just, I'd like, so you're proposing two hundred and fifty units? And we're talking about, what's our, what's our acreage here?
Yeah, nine.
Nine acres? Nine acres, yeah. Anything that you have that's, and it doesn't even necessarily have to be in Massachusetts, just that's close, just so, and, you know, we can do our own kind of imaging and look at, but just something that we can get a sense of what this, it's not going to be exact, but what the size and scope is.
Similar density.
Yeah, similar density, similar type of, of apartment numbers.
Building styles, yeah.
Yeah. Building styles, I'm not so, not so concerned of it because you're, at least from what I've seen here, you're trying to mimic the styles of the, of the Mills here. So, it's, it's more the numbers and the size that we'd like to get some comparisons on.
Sure, no problem.
Great.
Just one more addition to that with those similar projects. One that is as close to other residences would be interesting.
Oh, sure, there's plenty of those, yeah.
Great.
Next, we just have some photos of what our apartments look like when we're finally developed. They're obviously high-end development rental communities. I didn't mention this before, but we're proposing a hundred percent market rate community here. The units are very high-end, a lot of natural light we focus on, spacious layouts. One of the advantages of having this many apartments in our portfolio and developing consistently is that we're really up to speed on trends, furniture, how people like to live, how people like to lay out their apartments. So, our unit layouts are generally one of the things that we get high scores from, from our customers. Top left, you know, the living room, nice, open wide for multiple layout for furniture. Top right, we have a kitchen. You'll see quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances. Try to put islands in a lot of our kitchens, really to give it that open feel. Bottom left is one of our bathrooms. A lot of our homes have double-bowl vanities, some larger bathroom types as well. And every apartment home here, looking at the bottom right, will have a washer dryer in the unit. Next, these are some other amenities that we propose for our projects. Pets, top left, pet spas. We typically have a room within our communities that people can use to wash their pets and care for their pets. Top right is a club room, which is available for residents to come watch a game or have a family party, something that gives them another place to go beyond just their apartment home. Bottom left is a fitness center. All of our communities have fitness centers that are available for our residents. And on the bottom right is a sort of a work-from-home space. Those are things that we're trying to incorporate more into our communities as well. We also have a series of outdoor amenities. We try to get in, top left, some outdoor space related to dogs. On the top right, we have fireplaces and fire pits outside. We have a fire pit proposed here. It's been, we have some questions from the fire department about that we will address. Bottom, bottom left, a pool. We have a pool proposed for this site, and then outdoor dining and living options. So, tables with umbrellas, multiple seating options, grills. There's grills shown in here. We're not allowed, folks aren't allowed to have grills on their balconies within their units. So, we provide gas grills that are under our control that residents can use to make sure that they have that option as well. Just a little bit about the site. I think everyone is generally familiar, but it is the parking lots and the baseball fields, for lack of a better term, adjacent to the West Mill. It is a nine-point-four acre site, and, and we will, I'll leave it to Ed in a second to talk through the architecture and the density, but we currently have proposed two hundred and fifty homes with four hundred and thirty-four parking spaces, surface parking spaces. No structured parking proposed for this development. It's all surface parking. The next one. Just wanted to take a quick step back. You know, this was something that was new to us when we got involved in the project, but obviously, members of the board, some members of the board, and some members of the public, and RCG specifically, have been involved in a very long process related to this site in general. RCG purchased the East Mill in two thousand seven, and then purchased the West Mill in two thousand fourteen. Their purchase was really caused by the departure of Schneider Electric and Converse. You know, these were going to end up being vacant buildings when RCG took them over. And town meeting supported that by approval of the downtown, the Subdistrict A overlay, which supports not only the things that have happened so far at the Mills, but also supports the development of this parcel and the manner in which we've proposed it. Part of that was a partial demolition of the West Mill, so part of the office space, I think eighty or ninety thousand square feet of the West Mill was demolished to make room for their additional parking and upgrades associated and retail improvements that they've proposed for the site and actually delivered on in the site. So, the West Mill has gone, over the last several years, to become the place that everyone enjoys going to now. And I think that our development supports the mixed-use nature of the site. Lastly, there was a master plan update by the Town of North Andover in two thousand eighteen. And if you go to the next slide, I can talk about this site specifically as it relates to the master plan. So, the master plan identifies this site specifically in the master plan as a site for residential development. One of the main goals of the master plan was support the economic development of downtown North Andover. The Mills were part of that. Additional residential walkable density was a portion of that. So, if you read the master plan, you'll see that it supports, that this project supports the economic development goals, the land use goals, the housing goals, and the transportation goals that are outlined in the master plan. This site specifically called out, you can see it's a green triangle on the right-hand side, as a site for multifamily development and a key opportunity for investment within downtown North Andover. And from a smart growth planning perspective, this really hits on almost all of the major points as it relates to smart growth. It's a redevelopment site. It's in a mixed-use district. It's transit-oriented, and it's walkable to amenities. If you went to a ULI presentation or a planning presentation from a general planning study, I think this could be an example of taking a former industrial and office use that had a... a substantial change in 2014, 2015, and the town had the vision to pass, or the people of the town had the vision to pass the overlay district. And really, this is just the next step in encouraging that division, this vision, as it relates to both the zoning and the 2018 master plan. Just a few things about this project in particular. It has, RCG submitted a partial and got a waiver of the Sub District A preliminary master plan requirement for the West Mill in 2018, the end of 2018. There was a review of the preliminary subdivision plan by this board in February and March of 2019. We had a, Avalon Bay had a TRC meeting in 2019 and received comments from town departments. We made a preliminary presentation to this board in March of 2019, which resulted in some changes, both from the TRC meeting and the preliminary presentation. We've made a few changes that were in our formal submission that was made in 2019. The town peer reviews began in June of 2019, and last month, we had two neighborhood meetings on-site where we sent flyers out to direct butters and said, "Come meet us on-site, and we'll answer any question that you may have related to the property." So one of those was held in the West Mills. It was a rainy night, and one was held in the parking lot right on-site. So trying to do some outreach so that folks that have questions had multiple opportunities to get their questions answered. Little bit of legal zoning overview. I think Monica hit on several of these things with her presentation previously, but we're in the IS, and R4 zoning, all of our buildings and improvements are in the IS zoning district. We have the overlay district that was passed in 2015. We're seeking a definitive master plan special permit and a subdivision plan approval. The special permit, as was mentioned, is required for residential use. We're not requesting any waivers from parking requirements, bulk setback, density, any of the major requirements associated with the overlay district. And in reviewing the project internally, we believe that the project meets the special permit requirements, the purpose of the sub-district, the master planning goals, and the redevelopment vision for the mills that was put in place over the last several years. This is the initial site plan for the property. It is similar to what was reviewed in March, but we've increased a few of the setbacks and made a few other changes in response to comments from town boards. I think that there are a lot of benefits associated with this project. First is that, as I've mentioned before, it builds on the success of the East and West Mills. It improves landscaping and pedestrian connections, sidewalk improvements, the subdivision road, which Brian from Time Bond will get into later in the presentation. You know, new sidewalks, new landscaping, really make it, improve the walkability of the district. Shared parking benefits. We, the proposal includes 434 parking spaces, of which we have requested that 100 of those be available for the West Mill to use during the day. The West Mill, I think there was a previous question about this in our other meetings. The West Mill, I think to meet their zoning criteria, doesn't need them. I think they're convenient spaces for the West Mill. So the district encourages shared parking uses where available. It also encourages consolidation of curb cuts. We're not adding a new curb cut onto High Street proposed in this development. It's a transit-oriented development due to the bus locations right at the front part of the site. It retains several echoes of open space in the rear, so really cluster development. It's an opportunity to improve the natural environment. I think that with the stormwater improvements that we're proposing, also the improvements to the wetlands and the outfield, which is a wetland, and making sure that any impacts that we're doing to those wetlands are mitigated, you know, in a multiple circumstance. And additional tax revenue. So the fiscal impact study shows that, and we can certainly have our fiscal impact consultant come and speak specifically to any of these concerns as they come up, but the result of the study is that we produce more than twice as much revenue as she projects we would have for town services coming out of the 250 market rate homes that are proposed for this development. So certainly can talk more about that, but that was her conclusion, and she's a very well-respected financial consultant for this type of work. So that's it for me. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ed Bradford from the architectural team, who will talk through the site itself and the architecture.
Can I ask a question or two before that?
So, yeah, so I think, why don't we do, why don't we, we're going to have two questions about, about all the stuff that you talked about, and then we'll switch over to architecture. We'll ask questions about the architecture, and then we'll get to public comment.
Sure.
Okay.
So help me understand the arrangement. AC, that RCG West Mill is applying for the subdivision approval, and Avalon Bay is applying to, for a definitive master plan special permit. So RCG West Mill owns this property right now. What is your, do you have a contract?
We have a contract to purchase it, subject to some, you know, milestones and criteria being met.
Okay. And is there anybody from RCG West Mill here that, I'm just, I'm just curious as to, when you purchased this property, as you got to this conclusion, what were some of the options that you considered for this property? And what led you to coming to terms with Avalon Bay on a potential development?
I'm David Steinberg from RCG LLC. We represent RCG West Mill NA LLC. That really dates more back to the 2014, 2015 timeframe, and we were doing the vision for this project, which was to create a vibrant mixed-use community that would support retail on our site, retail in the downtown, and a mix of commercial and residential uses on the site. At that time, when the entirety of the West Mill campus was commercial and essentially large office space and manufacturing space, we determined in sort of master plan the site that the lowest value uses were the warehousing spaces, were the least appropriate for a downtown, as far as economic development, and as far as the specifics of this site having to do with the parking mostly being remote, as far as the stormwater management being problematic in the location of the buildings and the adjacent ponds. So at that time, we focused mostly on redeveloping the existing buildings into commercial space with some apartment components where they're most suitable. The buildings now have 39 loft-style apartments in the historic mill buildings. And the land that would then be surplus because the remote parking wouldn't be necessary with the development of, it's about 250 parking spaces on the, closer to the existing buildings would be more appropriate for residential development. And so that was the original vision proposed as we master planned the site, and as we worked with this board and other departments and through public hearings on the master plan that showed at that time residential development of the ballfields. And so as we've worked through the program to work primarily on the historic mill buildings and development of the majority of the commercial site, we've looked at this site in a lot of different ways. You know, we discovered the wetlands and sort of worked out what the impact on the master plan would be. We worked through, we've had discussions with many companies, and we really felt like Avalon Bay was the best possible developer of this site. And so that's where we ended up committing to.
It was always envisioned as a desire to?
As multifamily.
Okay. John, anything in specific you want to get into? I mean, I have a whole list.
Just one question. So you mentioned that the 250 units are market rate units. Was there any, how did you reach the conclusion of doing market rate versus some portion of affordable housing?
It was dictated by the zoning. So the zoning really dictated, prescribed really what we were doing on-site, is the density, affordable housing, so on and so forth. All of the proposal that's in front of you tonight, we think complies with all this zoning, and that's where we camp on the affordable housing.
I guess I'm not sure I understand that. You could do affordable housing there, right?
Sure. You could do affordable housing there. Yes, market rate housing is preferable for this site.
Why?
So I guess why is your preference, market rate rather than some percentage of affordable?
I think mostly economic in nature.
Okay, fair. Not that we necessarily agree, but, but.
Yeah, it impacts as well. I think that there are, mixed income housing has just different impacts than market rate housing, and we didn't consider that in our fiscal impact or any of the others.
Are any of your, as far as I know, I don't recall any of your buildings being, having affordable restrictions. Most of them are market rate, correct?
It's a, it's a mix. Every community's a little bit different. Every.
Do you have any that are, have percentage restricted to affordable?
Sure.
Which ones?
Several.
Can you give us a list? Not right now, at some point.
Sure.
The ones that you do have that are affordable, are they all based on 40B, or do you do some outside of 40B?
I would say that our affordable, you know, our mixed-income communities, I'll call them, several of them are 40B, and that was the zoning mechanism used to get the approvals. And the second would be the zoning required inclusionary development.
So if there was an inclusionary zoning bylaw, then you, and you wanted to go in, you met that?
That's correct.
Okay. So traffic, can you tell us a little bit? I read the traffic study.
Sure.
It was a lot. Want to give us a condensed version of?
If you don't mind, so after Ed Bradford, I have Brian Huntley from Time Bond, who's going to do the civil portion and a truncated traffic overview. So I'd rather, do you mind if we wait for that question after his presentation?
Here are the things that I want to talk about.
Sure.
You can tell me if you want to talk about them.
Okay.
You want to delegate them to somebody else.
Great.
As long as I'm talking about, I want to talk about traffic.
Yep.
I want to talk about municipal impacts, fire, police, and school. I want to talk about light and noise. I want to talk about the parking. I want to talk about, can you give some clarity as to setbacks as to where they are from the closest neighbors?
Sure.
I want to talk about, have you considered any mixed use? Because I did, you know, in the Sub District A, there is some discussion about mixed use, especially on the first floor. We do have a lot of mixed use in this area right now, which is great. Transit-oriented, we don't have to get too much into that today, but I don't really think that this is transit-oriented. It's nice that we talk about the bus, but the bus is the MVRTA. As much as they tried, they're, they don't really provide much. So I think if you're really going to be transit-oriented, you have to take more ownership of that. So I'd love to see something that really actually encourages either less cars ownership or car pools or something, or some sort of group transport to train stations, or just relying on the bus. It's nice to say, but it won't actually get you any, it won't actually get you less cars. Nobody is going to just rely on the MVRTA. This is just, that's not actually, in reality, going to happen.
Do you mind if I respond to that one?
Yeah.
So the MVRTA bus to downtown Boston is a huge selling point for us. We think that a lot of our residents will use it and will choose to live here because of it. Now, it won't take, and the mixed-use nature, I think that it won't take every car off the road. It won't take away every reason you need to drive somewhere, but it might take a few of those reasons, and cumulatively, those impacts matter. What I'd also say is that in the traffic study, and we'll let Brian do the presentation, but I'll just make one note now for, about the traffic, is that we, our traffic engineer to the study, he did not take any credits for transit-oriented, mixed-use, walkable, anything. He did it straight up like it was a greenfield site in the middle of, you know, not transit-oriented or walkable downtown anywhere, so.
I guess if you're looking through the topics, to me, the single biggest thing is the size and massing and the scale of the buildings next to the residential neighborhood. I mean, I think that's probably the single biggest thing because it's the scale. It's, it is a mixed-use neighborhood on one side, but it's a single-family neighborhood on the other side, and that's, that's, I think, one of, that's why a lot of people are here tonight. So we really have to get that on the table, so. The other thing, I think, in relation to that, is traffic, because the last time, if you remember when traffic came up, the access through the other condominium and over the Woodbridge was a source of huge concern, so we need to get that on the table, too. All the access, you know, as well, so.
Okay. Okay. Turn to Ed, and then I think we'll, all three of us will be available. I think we'll tag team and ask.
Okay, great.
Good evening. Just go to the next slide, please. The one prior. Okay, there we go. Thank you. So I'm going to just start, highlight a few of the key features of the site layout. As Dave mentioned, there are 250 units proposed in two residential buildings. So Building A is the smaller footprint in the lower part of the site. That building includes 97 units. And Building B is a larger footprint towards the center of the site, and that includes 153 units, as well as the common amenities and the leasing center. And you can see a red arrow there indicating the main entrance to that building, the leasing and amenities portions of that site. There's also a third building that's identified by the letter C in the kind of northern corner of the site. That's just a single-story maintenance building, just about 1,400 square feet, that is, serves as the maintenance facilities for the community. The proposed mix of apartment homes in this community is 22 studio units and 101 one-bedroom units. So that's, of course, just about 50% of the total are studios and ones, with the remainder primarily being two-bedroom units. There are 117 two-bedroom units. And then to finish off the total, there is 10 three-bedroom units proposed, so that's about 4% of the overall total of apartment homes in that mix. As Dave mentioned, there are 434 parking spaces proposed, and Brian, in his civil engineering presentation, can highlight a little bit more detail about that parking distribution and the types of spaces that are proposed. The layout of the site is informed greatly, of course, by the unique geometry of the site, the zoning for the site, and the existing conditions of the site. Starting with the zoning, there are a few kind of lines on here that I like to highlight. One is the white dashed line, and to get to your question, Mr. Chairman, what that highlights are the required setbacks for the lot. So that means typically 20 feet setback for the side and rear, and then a 35-foot setback required abutting the residential neighborhood. So what we have proposed is, as Dave noted, compliance with all of the dimensional regulations of the zoning. And concerning the setback itself, along that key setback common to the residential neighborhood, we've increased the 35-foot setback to 50 feet along that, along that setback and along that residential neighborhood. Another area that I would highlight that, of course, informs our site layout is the green line in the northernmost part of the site that shows the outline of the wetland. So of course, being careful to be setback from that wetland, and again, Brian can cover a little bit more detail on the proposed preservation and improvements for that wetland. And then finally, in two parallel blue lines that kind of are struck right across the site from east to west, that outlines an existing utility easement that is about 80 feet wide. So of course, that's an area that we are not proposing location of any buildings within that utility easement. So these are all things that inform our layout here. As far as site access goes, we're proposing a new shared roadway that has the same curb cut as, essentially the same curb cut location as exists today. So that is in the kind of bottom southwest corner, southeast, southeast corner of the site, again, where it exists today. And this is a roadway that we think will be much improved to what exists today. So site access today is really kind of across a parking lot. So what we're proposing is a great improvement to that, one in which, again, will feel more like a street lined with a sidewalk and street trees. So we think it'll be, of course, a natural pedestrian route for residents to gain access down to the amenities of the mill. So we think it'll be a very nice entrance into the site and greatly improved to what folks experience today.
One thing I want to point out, and I'm sure you saw it in the department review comments from DPW, was the layout of that intersection. It came up during the TRC, and, which was back in March, if I'm not mistaken, as well as the department review and today's meeting with engineering as well. They, DPW has expressed concern over the layout of that intersection. They would like to see a realignment of the driveway, something that's more aligned with Prescott. As you know, Prescott is a challenging, that whole intersection is a challenging intersection to navigate. So they've asked the developer to reassess that. They'd like to see more of a 90-degree angles instead of the current, the current layout. They'd like to see more of a ninety degree angles, um, instead of the current, uh, the current layout.
Are any waivers being requested on the subdivision for the road?
No.
Okay.
However, this road is, um, indicate, is, is intended to be a private road. So the, they're not necessarily held to the same standard as a, as a public road.
This might be a good point where we can tie the subdivision together to the, uh, special permit project. Because I'm having a hard time figuring out what's actually the real roadway that's a public way versus what is the traffic pattern through this property.
So yeah, Monica, if we could get some more information on that and the other thing in terms of, and I'd like to hear from you guys about, it seems like, I think, in the last, when you were here in March in the introduction, that we talked about, you know, the really entrances, I mean, people coming in and out through High Street and not through the Sutton Pond. But, uh, one, I want to know more about the ownership of the bridge and the road there, like, and, and the right of way. Like, is that towns, is it all private? If, if it's owned by private by Sutton Pond, can they just close it off? Um, and how there would be any enforcement if it's a private road of not going out or in through that? So I think we need some information from the town about, and, and from some research about easements and right of ways and all of that, but then also what you guys plan to do with that.
Mr. Chairman, we took a look at that and what we can talk about in the traffic study. We did traffic counts across the bridge.
Yeah.
Um, it's two hundred, about two hundred cars a day, which isn't out of norm for a hundred and eighty-eight homes at Sutton Pond. So we don't think there's a lot of cut through traffic. That said, we also did a legal review, uh, we also did a legal review. Uh, we also did a legal review of the documents.
Yeah.
And we didn't see anything in our review, and there may be other documents we couldn't find, that would preclude, um, putting gates up or something else that would keep Sutton Pond just for Sutton Pond residents and visitors.
Okay.
So, um, we'd be open to exploring that. I've mentioned that to the Sutton Pond residents at, uh, one of our butter meetings, is that we didn't see any reason that gates couldn't be put up for residents and guests. Uh, and we'd be happy to talk to them about that as potentially a mitigation measure.
Could you provide us what documents did the?
Sure.
You found, that would be helpful. Great, thank you.
But we, we don't, we don't propose our traffic to go through Sutton Pond or the bridge.
Right, so if there's something that can officially be done to make, make that actually happen, that would be a good thing.
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, continue, please.
So just to make one more point on the site plan, I just want to, um, our major goal of our, of our site layout here is really to create a sense of place, uh, of, you know, a special place of arrival and a focal point for, for recreation. And so the site constraints that I highlight, they result in this kind of angular geometry. But what we're proposing is a kind of focal point of recreation in a courtyard right in this zone here that, I, I have some renderings, I'll show this a little bit better in a moment. But an enclosed, um, recreational area highlighted by the pool and the courtyard and shaped by this building. This is a location where some of the amenities that Dave showed, both inside and at the exterior, it kind of happened right at this hub of activity. Um, so again, pool barbecue, fire pit and other amenities in this central kind of hub area. It's really a, a key focal point for the, for the site plan. So now I have, um, seven, uh, renderings, um, just to kind of walk you through what we're proposing as far as the architecture goes, um, kind of a, a tour of the, of the site, if you will. The first couple are, are from High Street. What we've done is we've, um, cropped our, our model into some, uh, current photographs from High Street. So this is the first one, we're looking north now, um, along High Street. The, the West Mill is to our left and the East Mill is to the right. Um, the buildings from this vantage point, you can see in this region here, they are set back, um, quite far actually from High Street and in this particular vantage point, uh, screened by those existing street trees on the neighboring lot. Um, but as far as the materials go, and I'll, I'll get to quite a bit more detail in some later renderings, um, a, a major goal of this, uh, of our architectural design here is to create, um, a proposed architecture that is compatible, complementary to the, to the mills. I think that's something I'll be able to highlight better in, in some subsequent, uh, views. Here is the, the second view from High Street. At this point, we're, we're, uh, at the intersection with, with Prescott. So you can see the West Mill to the left. This is building A here at the center. And you can just pick up a little bit of building B through the existing, um, uh, landscape and trees that are along that frontage. I think you can see a little bit better here, our proposal is, as far as the architecture goes. Again, a, a brick architecture that's complementary to the existing mill buildings with other aspects that I'll cover in a, in a moment. Here, we've moved, um, closer here, of course. So now in the foreground is building A, um, just to the right is building B. So we are along the, uh, entrance drive, uh, to the community. You'll see in some of these views, it's important that we kind of terminate some of these vistas so you have these interesting focal points as you travel down, in this case, the entry drive. So this would be a kind of focal point with a lot of glass. That would be something of interest as you approach the entry drive. What we're proposing in addition, um, to the, is really kind of two material palettes. Um, as I mentioned, one of them is this, uh, brick architecture that is informed by the, the, the mills. So what we're proposing are, um, kind of end caps, if you will, to the proposed, um, buildings and oriented towards High Street and towards the mills. Again, to create a, a, um, kind of termination to the, to the mill district that we think is fitting for that location. But along with that brick pallet, we're proposing an additional pallet. And you can see it here and you'll see it a little bit better in some other views in a moment. But that pallet has a little bit more of a residential quality. So we're incorporating some horizontal clapboards, um, some panel material. There is a brick, a darker brick that ties the two together. But what we're trying to, our design intent here with these two material palettes is to, you know, provide some contrast, break down the, the mass of the building and really, uh, give the appearance of, of multiple buildings. Um, so moving on to the next view here, we've kind of taken a right here. This is a little bit more of a higher, uh, bird's eye view. So now you get a little bit better view of building B. So as I mentioned in the site plan, the leasing office and the amenity space kind of occupy the ground floor of this building. You can start to get a glimpse of the pool courtyard. So again, this is the entrance, um, to the leasing office where prospective residents would, would first arrive. Um, what we're proposing is, is a design that, you know, maintains the quality of the, of the mill architecture. But at the same time, we want to be, uh, really careful to make sure the buildings have a residential quality. So the way we've done that is to, uh, propose this kind of brick framework, um, again, referencing the mill architecture. Uh, but at the same time, in, introducing residential elements. So you can see the slot of balconies here for that corner, um, living room for that particular unit. You can see some more variation in the window shapes, um, not necessarily a common feature in the mills where things are a little bit more regular. But we want to make sure that while referencing the mills, we also make clear this is residential building and the exterior is informed by the interior. So larger windows at living rooms, generally smaller windows at bedrooms. Here, again, you can see the combination of the two proposed material palettes that we think serve to break down the architecture. Now we're doing, uh, looking at a kind of aerial view of the amenity area. As I mentioned, this is kind of the focal point and that main recreational amenity for residents. Here, um, kind of interior to the site, central to the site, um, screened a bit from, um, the High Street entrance is an area we think that we could, and we're proposing a design that is a little bit unique, maybe a little bit more playful and indicative of the kinds of uses that happen within this portion of the, of the community. So again, leasing space here at the ground floor. This is the area where all the interior amenities that Dave showed are located. So in our current, uh, schematic design, we have located the fitness center in this region, club room here. And just as some of those photos that Dave showed, it's really important to have these, the, make these connections, have this transparency from indoors to outdoors. So it's a, it's a, again, this kind of hub of activity. As far as the design of this, uh, feature goes, again, uh, rising up to two stories from what is normally a one-story base. Um, in fact, the fitness room itself is a two-story space. So that's, that's just reflecting on the exterior what's happening on the inside. And then a little bit different architecture here, again, um, to signify the importance of this space. Um, you can see this lighter, uh, frame that we're proposing. We think is a nice contrast to the darker, uh, brick ends that bracket it. And then this, uh, wood grain like, uh, panel material that provides a kind of accent and a focal point at, at this, at this, uh, at this space. Um, so now we have come into the site and we've kind of turned around and we're looking back out to High Street. This is High Street just beyond. So I think in this view, you can start to get a sense of the enclosure that these angular buildings, uh, shape. We think it'll be a really pleasant space on the interior here for the pool. So again, uh, pool courtyard here on the left, you can see the, the amenities base. And again, the combination and the palette of materials. So as you kind of move through the site, you see this, um, the kind of resulting variation of, of this, those these different palettes. And then finally, I think this is my last, uh, uh, rendering here for you. I think this, this view is, is of, um, building A. And this, I think, is the only view where we kind of capture an entire building. So to finish with this one, you can kind of see the entire, uh, palette in one building. Again, brick ends, bracketing the more residential palette. I think you can get a sense of the residential scale here, the importance of balconies. Every unit is in fact, proposed to have a, a balcony. So the importance of outdoor space and that kind of creating this residential scale overall for the community.
I think, I understand what you lay out and I, but to me, the critical thing is not this side, it's the other side. Uh, and that's, that's what you need to, uh, address because, uh, these are five-story buildings. So this is to me, this is going to be fifty feet. You said you bring in a building within fifty feet of the property line. So I'm trying to understand the scale between the peak of the building and the nearest house. And that's, that's the most important single thing we've got to address here. And not, it, these feel more like marketing materials than things that impact the neighborhood.
I know there's a lot of people here and I know you all have things that you want to say. So if we could save all the clapping for the end, we can get more people to be able to get what they want to say said. So John makes a very good point, so, um.
We'll work on some, we don't, we don't have graphics for those tonight?
Great.
We will work on some graphics that show some of the impacts from some of the other view corners.
I mean, I think a couple of things we need to do is, and I know I'm digressing, but we're going to have to do a site visit. You're going to have to stake the corners, I think, of the buildings. And also I think we, we need a balloon test to see how high the, uh, the, the height is so we get some sense of, of scale, I think. I think that would be an important thing to do because even though we're here, we see pictures and everything, I think there's no substitute for actually being physically there where, where it is.
So I, I, so I, I agree with that. I was thinking about the site visit, but I think we need to get a little bit further into the process.
Yeah, we need to be a little bit further along, yeah.
But yes, we want to do all of that. So.
Okay, that's fine. This is Brian Huntley, he's our engineer.
Okay.
So he was going to do the next portion of the presentation.
How much more do you have?
Is six or eight slides, I think, to go through the civil and the traffic components. So hopefully it'll answer some of the questions you have.
And then after that, did it? Because I just want to get to the resident comments.
That's it for us.
Perfect, great, go for it.
And I can be quick. Again, my name is Brian Huntley, I'm with Time Bond, we're the site civil engineers for the project. Um, the existing conditions, I think we've talked about it, you know, fairly significantly all well. There's a significant portion of the site that's already pavement, that's the, the parking lots, it's impervious. There is some green space on the site as well as some wetlands associated with the site. So if you can move to the next slide. Talking briefly, I think, in the hope to try to bring some of the questions that the board had earlier as well, uh, the subdivision plan is actually intended to create a new private access road, um, which will divide existing, there are two parcels, that those will be essentially combined and then subdivided into three discrete parcels at the end of the project. One will be for the West Mill, another will be for the Avalon Project, and the third will basically occupy the shared parking that we're discussing on the southern end of the site. Um, subdivision roadway, and again, the idea, as Ed pointed out, is to create more of a formal entrance and a formal concise, uh, traffic flow. The curb cut is essentially in the same location as where we're proposing the access road currently. We are proposing to essentially meet the, um, design criteria of North Andover from a subdivision control point of view. We're proposing a significant amount of, uh, street trees. We're doing full utilities, uh, stormwater design to manage all the stormwater runoff, sewer and water to support the new project as well, that will be private, that would be in the private roadway also.
Utilities above ground or below ground?
Uh, below ground, below ground. From a site improvement point of view here, um, and we can go into, you know, a little of the details here that we're talking about, um, we do, as Ed showed, I'll have all the, the property setbacks that are shown on here. And I know there's some questions on that, but it gives some, some idea too, what the, the zoning requirements are, which, as Ed indicated, you know, zero fronts, front, zero foot front yard setback is required by, by zoning, twenty foot side, except where it meets a residential, which it's in thirty-five, and then a twenty foot rear. Um, from a site entrance point of view, and you can see it on here, we essentially have two proposed curb cuts from the new access road, and the new access road is kind of, uh, you know, cut off of this view to give a little more, um, credence to the underlying orthophoto. But the subdivision road would essentially, you know, be where the existing curb cut is. And the site entrance, there are two curb cuts to the, the project that we're proposing. One is more towards the building area, the other will be towards the, the shared parking area.
Is the sub, where, is the entire subdivision road intended to be private way?
Correct.
Okay, are you going to build with grade and construction consistent with town standards?
Correct.
Okay, so it would have, you know, sidewalk on both sides?
Uh, there's, there's sidewalk proposed, and I know that, that the subdivision drawings, the subdivision plans do show all of that detail, all of the sections, all of the improvements, the grading and the landscaping. There is parallel parking that we're proposing to create more of a sense of a roadway section there as well. On the new subdivision road, we have sidewalks, and sidewalks are actually critical to the project in general, that it, it gives a very, um, you know, smooth flow of pedestrian traffic from the establishment to all of the amenities that exist or that will exist throughout the rest of the, the neighborhood and the West Mill that's happening. So, yeah, yes, the intention is that we are providing a subdivision road that's compliant, that will look like a city street, but it will be a private road. I believe, yeah, the sidewalk, I believe, is on the, the proposed residential side, not on the side that's currently supporting, uh, the West Mill and the, um, the loading docks that are associated with the West Mill. Um, from a parking point of view, and this is a perfect slide for that, um, as it has been discussed, we're actually proposing, uh, four hundred and ten off-street parking stalls, which is shown within the entire, um, you know, layout here. Uh, and there are ten spaces that are parallel spaces that you can see on the subdivision road down in the lower right-hand corner. And there are fourteen additional public spaces that are within a hundred yards of the site, which in the, in the zoning bylaws is what's allowed to be used to take credit for, um, for existing on-street parking within, within the area.
One thing that I, I would like to point out are restrictions during winter, which may affect on-street parking as well as, uh, as parking during the day. There's restricted hours, it's limited to, if I'm not mistaken, three-hour parking, um, which may impact, uh, this calculation as well.
On the parking, I think, um, we've, we've studied, we have a lot of communities, we understand how much parking we need for our communities. I will tell you that we think we have more than enough parking here. We think that the four hundred and ten spaces that, striped spaces that we have on-site will more than adequately serve the residents and visitors that we'll have associated with our site. So I just wanted to make that point. From a practical point of view as an operator, we think we have enough on-site and we won't rely on those off-site spaces. But from a zoning point of view, we were using them for compliance.
Are the parking spots assigned?
Uh, they wouldn't be, there may be some that are assigned in specific instances. For example, uh, someone has a specific need, a handicap or, or so, or similar, uh, where we assign a space. But in general, they're just for our residents and they can park wherever they want.
And a resident can have as many cars as they, none, no cars or multiple?
They could. They could.
So quickly, from a pedestrian circulation point of view, we're showing a four-and-a-half foot wide concrete sidewalk essentially throughout the site. The idea is that we're linking the building to the parking area as well as to the neighborhood. There are accessible routes, curb ramps, curb cuts throughout. Accessible parking is proposed to be shown on the site as well in the accessible routes, and we will have bike racks throughout the facility to support the use. From a site point of view, the stormwater is essentially, the majority of it is being treated as if they are new discharges, which they will be, to essentially the northwest, which is where the wetland area is on-site. There's three different treatment trains that we're proposing, all in compliance with the DEP stormwater guidance, as well as the North Andover bylaw requirements through the Conservation Commission, that we're doing deep-sump hooded catch basins. We have water quality units following those, and then we're doing infiltration subsurface in some locations. And then in other locations, we're actually proposing bio-retention areas that are above surface, that are vegetated swales, that provide the same level of treatment prior to either infiltration or discharge to the wetland features on-site. In addition to that, we are exceeding the groundwater recharge requirement, so essentially the fact that a large portion of the site currently is paved, and we're adding more pavement in the building, we are meeting the DEP requirements from a groundwater recharge point of view to increase the infiltration of stormwater onto the site.
Can you talk a little bit about the wetlands? Just show us again, sort of where the delineation is, and how that's kind of contributed to your overall design?
Sure, and I think actually the next slide does that a little bit better. And, no, one back from there. Forward a couple more now. Next one. That one right there. So, and I will talk to it and then step away and point it out, but essentially, the upper portion of the site, which is currently, a large majority of it is the ball field, is a delineated wetland. Oh, thank you, Ed. Okay, perfect. So this is the limit of the wetland here. You can see the flags, you can see the buffer zones that are drawn around it. So in this area here, to maximize the efficiency of the layout, we're proposing a small amount of wetland fill in this area here, which is where the baseball field is currently. And in mitigation for that, we're proposing an actual, a wetland replication area also on the site, I believe it's in this area. And then what we're also proposing is remediation essentially, which will provide some restoration or more valuable wetland habitat to the area on the site that doesn't currently look like a wetland. And this is all subject to Conservation Commission review. We did submit a notice of intent to the Conservation and Commission, and they're going through their review as well, as well as a peer review, I believe, to address all of those, excuse me, features that are associated with that.
So you're saying a large part of the ball field is actually a wetland?
Correct. And actually, if you go back one slide from this, I think that's a good place to show it.
Yeah.
So, in this area here, you can see this as, you know, the mode ball field. That is all delineated wetland right in there.
Okay.
I think when you do your site visit, you'll see it very clearly. Go ahead.
I'll be clear, when we got involved in the site, I was confused. I was as confused as you may be now looking at it. I assumed that the wetlands flagged meant that along the property line, the wooded areas were the wetlands, but it's actually the inverse. The outfield is the wetlands.
Okay. Are there any additional outside amenities planned? I know, looking for, thinking about the schools, they mentioned with this type of residence market rate, and it was 44 children, school-aged children. What about outdoor amenities, are there any playgrounds or anything you're looking to put on the property for that? Where would kids, those 44 kids be congregating?
We are not proposing a playground as part of this site. I think that we would rely on the city or town infrastructure, parks and so on, that everyone else uses to take kids out.
Okay, there's no additional?
There's no additional. We have a pool, which obviously kids will love. There are some indoor areas where the kids can use the indoor areas, probably not, depending on the age, parts of the fitness center, but certainly the club room. Sometimes we have gaming elements in there, pool tables or other things like that that the kids could use.
Okay, great.
One question regarding parking design. I guess more mobility within the parking lot. How are residents going to move in, move out? How do moving trucks get in and out? Has that been thought of?
So...
There's a plan you showed before that showed the curb cuts and such throughout the parking lot. It looked very tight.
From an access point of view, the site will accommodate the 100-foot ladder truck that the North Andover Fire Department has, as well as moving vans. There aren't specific loading stalls that are proposed here on the site. It's something that would be flagged off when there's loading and unloading for people to be able to get to the elevators or to their rooms to do the moving. But from an onsite access point of view, the access aisles are all 24-foot width, and the radii around the site have been designed to allow for a moving van to move in and out, as well as the large fire truck here in North Andover.
But it's a good point, that, you know, you're proposing this complex in the middle of all these other businesses too. So, something to potentially think about for, you know, set hours or things like that or something. You know, I don't know if you guys have set days and times when people move in, but...
We do. I mean, these are elevator buildings, so one benefit of having Avalon be the developer is we have full onsite management and maintenance that will be handling the resident from the day they come to lease an apartment till the day they move out. All the moves are scheduled. Everyone will need to book an elevator to get in, they'll need to make sure that they book a time, we make sure it's not overcrowded, and for us, it's really a quality-of-life issue for the rest of the residents that happen to live in the community, so we take it very seriously and manage it well.
Okay, great.
All right. I think that the, essentially the final comments that I had essentially were the site are with respect to the utilities, and we are providing new private utilities to the buildings, meaning new water lines with hydrants as required by the fire department. We have new sewer services that we'll be accessing into the sewer line, the sewer main that runs through the site. And, you know, power, communication, cable TV are all amenities that will be provided to all the buildings as well. So, I think that takes us down to the next slide would be the transportation and traffic scope. And I want to say that Time Bond did do the traffic study on the project. I'm not the traffic engineer, the traffic engineer is actually in India and couldn't be here tonight. So I wanted to provide an overview. I know that you have the report that was submitted. I know that there is a peer review that's in process, so my goal for tonight was to try to provide you with the overview, with the information, but I can't answer a significant amount of questions, and I can't get into an awful lot of debate, because I'm not the expert, but he will be at the follow-on meetings and can take as many questions as are possible at that point.
Okay.
So, essentially the study scope, and this is the process that we went through here, is we met with the town staff to confirm exactly what the scope should entail. We collected data, we looked at all of the existing conditions, we looked at the current development that's happening within both the neighborhood and the area and the community. We estimated the future conditions, both with and without this project being constructed. We looked at the operations that are, you know, currently existing on the roadways, as well as the delays in the queuing on the public streets. We had a mind towards pedestrian safety, as well as, you know, as we mentioned, access to public transportation. We went through to then quantify the impacts that are associated with the project, and then we also went through, as you can see in the report, and identified a number of areas where we believe there are some opportunities to make some improvements, that, you know, regardless of whether or not the project goes forward, there could be areas that are deemed as issues, you know, within the community. The next slide, please. This provides, and again, I won't go into all the detail, but this does provide the network of the intersections that we went out and studied, and it included going out on-site and doing manual counts, looking at the traffic, looking at truck traffic. This was done for the peak hours, both in the morning and in the afternoon, to gather the data to determine how the existing traffic functions on this network here that currently exists. Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay. And the data that was used to support this is we did, you know, like I indicated here, the peak period counts, pedestrian counts, daily traffic counts. We looked at vehicular speeds, and then we looked at a breakdown of trucks versus cars that are on these roadway networks. We looked at the geometry and all of the traffic control that exists. We went through MASDOT and the RMV to do vehicle crash data. We looked at the vehicle crash history for a past number of years on the roadways and in this area. That's all summarized and compiled in the report as well. We sent an engineer to the field to make field observations, and the projections that we used for the development are based on Institute of Transportation Engineering guidelines. It's an industry standard that's used for each type of use, what the proposal, what the proposed traffic would be associated with those. And then we also use census transportation data to quantify and adjust based on what the trends are in the entire industry, up or down in the coming years, to come up with the data that we did. Essentially, the findings of the study are that the mixed-use neighborhood does promote non-automobile activity, meaning exactly what we discussed, that the goal of having a pedestrian way between residence and non-residential uses will encourage people to move about without using their vehicles. The traffic peaks are different, whether it's a residential or a commercial use, which coincides with and works well with mixing the uses between residential and commercial. And convenient access to commuter rail and bus service for work-related trips is an encouragement as well. Multiple ways to access the regional highway system. And again, the thought is that a fair amount of the traffic will be leaving North Andover for commuting and getting to and from, you know, regional highway systems is a good thing to have, and there are a number of ways to do that for the site. Project-related traffic varies by location, and we split up the traffic depending on where we thought it would go. And there's essentially five to 30 trips during the morning peak, and five to 40 trips during the evening peak that would be associated with this project. The current roadway traffic in this network of roads that we studied varies from 200 to 1,700 vehicles per hour during the morning peak and the afternoon peak. The capacity analysis does show that there are some congested locations that are also congested in existing conditions, and that the traffic impact at these locations that would be related to this project is not significant. And then beyond that, as I indicated, we did provide some potential improvement measures to address some deficiencies at some of these locations. So as I kind of indicated, the next step, certainly on the traffic side, being that there's an independent peer review that's being undertaken, both for traffic as well as the stormwater and the civil engineering pieces that I went through earlier. We are in the process of addressing both the town and the first round of the peer review comments that we've received, you know, with more details to be presented at future planning board meetings here with you. And from that, I think we turn it over to...
Thank you.
I think just one note on the traffic. The two intersections that were identified in the traffic report is already having problems and, you know, worthy of study, or Prescott and High, and High and Sutton Street. Those were the...
High and Water.
No, further up, yeah, all the way up High Street, so you go past our site and all the way up.
Not High and Water?
Not High and Water, no.
Okay. So, great, thank you. So here's what we're going to do now. We're going to take public comment. So, anyone who wants can come up. Again, you can be first, sir. I think, he got up and he's waiting, I know it. So, a couple things though. As the, was it Brian? Mentioned, so on traffic, the particular traffic engineer who did the study is not here, and we are currently waiting for our peer review, meaning the town has hired someone independent, well, hired, picked by the town, paid for by the applicant, okay? So an independent to give us a review of their traffic study. If you want to talk about how traffic is terrible now and things like that, we're happy to hear that, or if it's great, you can tell us that, I don't think we'll hear that. But you can give us your comments about it. But specific questions, I think we'll really wait till we get our review back and have a chance to talk with our engineer before we're really able to give substantive answers or get really substantive answers, okay? Schools, same thing, if you want to make comments about schools and impact, we're going to have Assistant Superintendent Emilia here next week to answer questions. So if it's questions, that should probably wait. If you just have comments about how you think the effects, we can take those now and relay those next week, or you can submit them by email, or you can ask them next week, just on those. So, with that said, anyone who wants to make comments? Let's start, come on, sir. So again, I'd ask that you state your name, say where you live, and give us your most concise statement.
Thank you, Detective Board. Donald Moriarty, 148 Main Street, Sutton Pond. I've been a resident owner in North Andover for 24 years now. First off, what we have today in a one-quarter mile of High Street, number four High Street in the West Mill has 150 residential units in the past couple of years. The East Mill has approximately 70 residential units, and I understand plans for more. Fine. Now, RCG Corp. has done a fabulous job with the reconstruction of the West Mill, and we appreciate that at Sutton Pond very much. They've been a good neighbor. You have 150 in the West Mill, 70 presently in the East Mill, 188 in Sutton Pond. Keeping in mind Sutton Pond's only egress to leave the area is the right-of-way out alongside the West Mill project. That's 188 units. The other road is a one-way, not that some people pay attention to it. We have 408 units. Now this is, again, I want to emphasize a quarter-mile. Five restaurants now. Well in excess of 30 independent businesses within that quarter-mile. We're proposing 250 additional units to fit into that one quarter-mile, as far as the traffic and so forth. We've mentioned Prescott Street a number of times. Anybody in that area knows Station 1, their egress to downtown is Prescott Street. We see it daily. We just have so much into this area now, also that the board did bring up the height of the thing. There is no structure, including Sutton Pond or the Mills, in excess of four stories ground level. And what we're talking here is an offset that's just massive. But again, my question is, with the only egress for 188 units of Sutton Pond, 250 units, and where are they going with all the vehicles that are presently parked at West Mill parking area? They're going across the street, they're not going away. So, folks, I think this is something that has to be looked at seriously. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Yeah, I'm not going to call on people except for him, because he was, really looked like he was waiting. So, anyone else, why don't we line up here? You got a front seat, so that's great.
Hi, I'm Jackie Stern. I also live at Sutton Pond, 148 Main Street. I have a question of, I do see just the one point of side entry, is there any possibility of maybe having another entry point? I'm not sure if that has been studied by, could be studied by the township.
An entry point?
Specifically, I'm looking here. Do you have this side entry? Is there any way that you could do some kind of exit or entry point here to maybe defray some of the traffic?
Okay.
And the other thing is, I think on one of the slides that was shown, you were saying something about non-automobile traffic during rush hour, and I kind of disagreed with that statement, and the reason I'm saying that, my experience with Avalon has been that it's geared to young professionals, which means that those people will more than likely be commuting into Boston on a daily basis. So I have a feeling you probably will be having at least 250 additional cars going back and forth on High Street during those rush hour, or more. And the other thing is, you mentioned 24 parking spaces on the street. Where are, exactly, where is that street parking supposed to be? I don't think that was specified, was it?
So what they're saying is that our zoning bylaw allows them to count 24, the spaces that are already existing, as, towards their count of what they're required to have. So, it's not new parking spaces?
Ten of the spaces are new, they're parallel on the subdivision road.
On the street?
So of the 24 non-stripped spaces within our lot that are exclusive to us, 10 of those are on the subdivision, the new subdivision road, parallel to our property line? 10 of those are on the subdivision, the, the new subdivision road, parallel to our property line where the sidewalk is. So that's 10 of them. 14 of them are within 100 yards of the site, which are the typical.
Existing public spaces, right.
And looking at the master plan, it says that the construction is going to be, uh, do you know, at least for two years? That the first phase is gonna be completed at the end of 2020 and the second 2021. Uh, so that means we're gonna be having construction vehicles back and forth on High Street as well as Prescott. And can the, uh, the roads actually handle that kind of, uh, construction vehicles on a daily basis? I think that's something else we need to probably take into consideration. And my other concern is the actual infrastructure. I mean, we recently had a water main break over, uh, do you know where Sharma Grill is? And, you know, we also had the gas explosion. So if we're adding an additional 250 units, can the water system as well as the, uh, the gas lines actually handle the additional 250 units?
So that, that'll be looked at by our DPW.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Sean O'Reilly and I live at 148 Main Street. I don't have a lot to say, but I just wanted to make a comment about sharing the parking lot as the exit. Cause just last month, my car was totaled in that parking lot. So I don't see how excess traffic is gonna benefit anybody here.
So the, the, the point is, is this, so I think, and I think it's where the Sutton Pond coming out.
Yeah, it's a picture of my car.
Uh, is that an accident in the parking lot?
Yes, in that parking lot where it was supposed to be sharing with Avalon Bay residents.
So I think.
To exit.
So I think it's a fair point to talk about, though, that we've talked about how where your residents are gonna park. But, um, people from Sutton Pond who still live there will need to now go across that as well and what we can.
And I know, I'm sorry if it's not clear from the graphic. We can certainly present a different graphic on it next time if it makes more sense. But where you see the site entry and you see the word site and entry, that driveway that is currently there, that, that will remain. We're gonna improve it, make it feel more like a road and have fewer curb cuts. Because right now, when you go in there, there's probably six or seven, um, parking aisles that you can turn into. We're gonna organize that in a, you know, better fashion. So if there's only two curb cuts along that length that enter into our site, which will really organize the traffic so that the access to Sutton Pond is actually improved from what's current condition.
So yeah, I think some.
Graphics on that.
Graphics on how the actual parking lot. Okay, so I thi- I, so I think, this is doing some graphics about how the parking lots will be laid out for the whole, how that'll affect everyone, I think would be great, whether it's West Mill, whether it's Sutton, whether it's Avalon, that would be great. And then, um, I think some of the point is to, to add a traffic of all the number of, uh, cars. Um, so just some discussion on that would be helpful. But graphics would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila Pendleton. I live on Irving Road. I was just wondering, this is the first I've heard of this building C, the maintenance building. I was just wondering exactly what is that building and how big is it? And what is it, what's inside? Are there gonna be machinery? What is it?
Do you wanna touch on that? Ed, what's in the maintenance shop?
Yeah, well, it's, it, it serves, as I said, as the maintenance facility for, for the community. So it's a, it's a relatively small structure, 1,400 square feet, one-story in height. So something on the order of, you know, uh, 15 feet to the mean of the gable roof, something of that order. Um, the, the function within the billing are basically, um, uh, for the maintenance staff. So there's, you know, there's a, a maintenance workshop where there would be, you know, the ability to, um, repair appliances and the, and the like. There's, there's some office space for maintenance staff.
Lunchroom, lunchroom. It's all really ma- making sure that we have enough space to store the tools that are associated with the facility. It's not really manufacturing. It's really, uh, an area where we have an office for manager, a break room for our, um, staff, uh, storage and a, a workshop where they fix appliances and fix other things associated with the apartment.
And the storage is for, just for the maintenance?
Yeah, it's just, uh, filters and excess flooring so that, um, hinges for cabinets, all the types of things that you would need if you were a maintenance associate to fix somebody's apartment.
And when you said, um, you said before that the trash is gonna be held in Building A and in Building B?
Sure, yeah. Each, each building has its own tra- has its own trash room. Ed, you wanna touch on that?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So ea- each building at the ground floor will have its own trash room with a compactor. So then, uh, you know, trash for residents is via trash rooms on each floor above. So there'll be a chute for recycling and a chute for trash. So residents can drop their trash vertically, uh, from their floor down to the trash room. So that's, the compactor and storage is interior. And then at pickup times, it's moved out to the curb for pickup, so.
It's not dumpsters in a parking lot.
Okay, yeah, and I just wanted to be sure that Building C wasn't the big trash room.
No, it's, it's, it's essentially.
Cause it's right near all the wetlands and just, um, you know, it wouldn't be a good site for all the, for animals or things.
No, agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, John, John Finlemore, 90 High Street. As you can see from the turnout here, there's a lot of interest in the town. I do not pretend to speak for everybody here, but as the direct neighbor, we're that little, the swimming pool is right there. That's our home, is a direct neighbor to, to the West Mill. Um, we've taken a lot of, uh, feedback from the community. Um, and so I don't stand up here and speak for everyone, but I do speak for myself, my wife Sally, who couldn't be here tonight, but she will be here at future meetings. We have lived in North Andover for 14 years. Six of those, we have lived, um, next to the West Mill, right? We've been in, in the machine shop village there on 90 High Street. A few things, right? Um, going back to not representing everybody. We have collected over 1,200 signatures opposed to this from community members, both on paper and an online petition that, um, is open and we're still collecting signatures as we speak. The opposition to this is wide and deep in the community. We are not saying that we don't want anything in the West Mill, right? As a resident of the West Mill, we have actually benefited from the work that RCG has done there, right? There are restaurants we can go to, businesses we patronize. We have friends who live and work in the West Mill. My wife had two jobs in the East Mill, right? We, we have benefited from the work that has gone on inside the Mills, right? What we are saying is that this development, as defined, we are opposed to. I know we're not voting tonight, but I would encourage RCG and Avalon to consider rescinding this and coming back with something that is more akin to, it's more in line with what is acceptable to the community as well as what's more in line with the master plan, which I'll talk to in a few minutes. Actually, let's talk about that right now. The master plan, we'll have to respectfully disagree that we read it very different ways, right? In the master plan, there are 103 strategies laid out for the town. And this master plan is not old. It was, um, submitted less than a year ago, September of 2018. This is a very recent document. Of the 103 strategies, 27 of them, 26 percent, 27 of them relate to housing. None of that, so 26 percent of the plan relates to housing. None of it says we should have more apartment buildings. I'm not saying that apartment buildings are bad, right? What it says is that there's already 1,000 under development. There are 600 plus in a 1.5-mile stretch between Barker and High Street, right? Whether it's fair or not to the applicants, right? It's not just the West Mill complex that has to be considered. It's the overall impact of 600 apartments in this short period, uh, in the short stretch of town. It is, you know, we look at that intersection, call out the one at Sutton Street and, um, and Prescott, and I would agree, that's a difficult intersection. Add into that all the apartments going in on Barker, behind China Blossom, the ones going on High Street, and all the increased, um, uh, work traffic for people going to work at Amazon. We don't know, any traffic, um, study done right now is moot. What we, we need is what it's gonna be once all those thousand apartments go in and Amazon has, um, 1,500 workers out there and on loose and, okay? You know, it's great that they've done one and they're commissioning another one, but unless it can take into account all of that future traffic in that concentrated period of time, it's moot. So it's likely inevitable that something will be developed there. And as a, as a neighbor of that, um, uh, of the West Mill, happy to participate in any discussions about what we wanna do with it. We're just asking that something is done that's consistent with the master plan. So going back to the master plan, what does the master plan say about apartment buildings? It says, page 40, "The town has a number of large apartment complexes in 40B projects permitted and constructed, but still lacks for a variety of housing types that residents are looking for." "North Andover has a healthy inventory of family, multifamily units, including apartments." It says that what the town needs, accessory dwelling units, cohousing, modular housing, multi-generational housing, small-scale mixed-use. This is what the North Andover town says that it needs. And I believe it's up to our elected and appointed officials to drive a plan towards that. I could keep going and going, I wrote a six-page letter, which I submitted to you guys already, so I'm not going to do that. Uh, there's a lot of questions laid out in this. Um, I just wanna, uh, and John, you touched on the, um, the building height, right? Um, the building height is obviously a major concern to, especially those who directly abut the property, right? I think the quote was, "Every unit will have a balcony," right? That balcony, again, and, and you've called out fairly, we need to see what it's gonna look like from the other side, right? Again, uh, we're not saying no, but we need something that is, has a much, um, a, a less of an impact on the, uh, on the abutting, uh, communities. And this isn't just a, a NIMBY reaction, you know, not in my backyard. This is actually according to the town bylaws. Town bylaw says, "The town has an obligation to minimize visual and functional conflicts between residential and non-residential uses within and abutting the district." It says, "The master plan encourages the town to set standards that match the lot sizes and context of neighborhoods." It says, "The permit says, 'The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.'" And finally, again, presuming that something does inevitably happen, we would look to the planning board and other officials in town to attach conditions seen as necessary, necessary to, and this is a quote, "protect the neighborhood." I'll stop there, but, um, uh, again, we do, uh, you talked about doing a site visit. I encourage that. And if, as part of that site visit, you wanna visit our home or the homes of any of our, the neighbors, we'd be happy to have you and talk more about the, the development. Thank you. Our letter is a matter of public record, it's on the website, correct?
So it's, it's, um, it is a matter of public record and more importantly, it's part of the record of this hearing.
Yeah.
However, your petition is not.
Okay.
So, uh, you can, any, so this hearing's not gonna end tonight. It will be continued, uh, until we close it and vote. So that should at least be, at least, at least one more meeting, probably multiple. So if you ever want it to be, and we'll let you know when we plan to close it, but, um, if you want it to be part of the record, you actually have to submit it.
We will absolutely submit it. We've got a PDF of the online one that has over 875 signatures. And then we've got the 300-plus signatures on paper that we can hand to you as well.
So whatever you want to submit and whenever, as long as the hearing is open, you can send it in and it'll become part of the record.
Again, 1,200 opposed to this.
Darn tough act to follow. So I'm Diane Montella. I live here in North Andover in the Sutton Pond condominiums, have a lot of familiar faces in the audience. Um, so, but I wanted to start by sharing something I learned on North Andover Ma- and northandoverma.gov. And that is that the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 people sitting here tonight with us at this late hour are all volunteers, yes? And we thank you for that.
Well, so, four of us are volunteers. One of us is an employee of the town. There are two other members of the board who are not here tonight.
Who are not here, okay.
So it's a five-member board with one associate member, all of which are volunteers. And then Monica works for the town in the planning department.
So this is, um, Ms. Gregoire, thank you for your public service as a, as an employee of the town. I work for VA, by the way. Um, and Ms. Cormier, Mr. Goldberg, very impressive chair, chairing, thank you. I'm, I'm sincere about this. I've done a lot of, not government work like this, but work like this, it's tough. Mr. Preston, thank you. Mr. Simons, thank you. And I assume you all have day jobs that you have to get up for tomorrow morning or responsibilities in your life, a- as do the folks here. So thank you for being in this with us. And I have to tell you, I'm, I was pleasantly surprised at the fairness of the questions and comments that you've brought forward. And I also wanna tell you that the conversations that I have been having with people in, in my immediate community in Sutton Pond and other people you bump into on Main Street when you're buying a salad at House of Pizza or J&amp;M Subs or one of the, Mici's or one of the other places, um, is that people have the hopefully mistaken impression that this is a done deal. And that the planning commission, um, has made up its mind based on the information that it has in hand already. And so I'm wanting to ask you if that's true.
No.
Thank you.
So what I'll say is, no, no, it's not. I mean, we've all, everyone, I think, has opinions and thoughts and questions, but until the hearing's open, we have no evidence before us. And now we have evidence before us, we have questions that are going to be answered. We have, uh, reviews that are being done by the town. Um, so no, no, we don't make a decision until we close the hearing and then vote. We all have concerns, we all have ideas. And, you know, I think we'll probably share some of them maybe tonight, some of them at, at future meetings. So, no, nothing's been decided.
Thank you. And I, I also learned on northandoverma.gov, uh, that the planning board has a philosophy. It's got multiple points. And I actually wanna ask you a couple of questions about that. So, and I'm serious, I'm not being, I'm not being silly here or being oppositional. So first one, planning principle, so philosophy, to encourage planning principles that promote rational, economical and environmentally efficient use of land, to allow North Andover to grow in a manner consistent with the goals of the community. In this case, Avalon folks were using the term "community" right to refer to our town. So what I wanna know is what are the goals of our community? Is there an answer to that? Is there an easy answer to that? Is there a summary answer to that?
So I will tell you, no, no, there's not an answer to that. There's not an easy answer to that. When we did the master plan, which tried to coordinate all the thoughts of members of the community and ideas on all these ranges of topics, economic development, open space, housing, there was consensus in some areas, like people really in this town love the open space that we have and wanna conserve it as much as possible. Economic development, people wanted a, uh, thriving downtown. Housing was really, really divided and there are no easy answers for any town in Massachusetts about housing, okay? Should we have more housing? Should we have less housing? What type of housing? There aren't good answers. We have data, but how people interpret that data and how people feel about that data is very, very mixed. And housing was the biggest divider, I would say, in the master plan. So, and this project touches all of that, right? Because if I look at the data, I think we need more housing in, in North Andover. Some people would say, no, we don't need more housing. And the question is, where do we have that housing and how dense do we have that housing? And, and what available locations? And how do we, um, how do we coordinate that with its really impactful effects on a local neighborhood? And that's what we're trying to figure out. And so that's why we say I, we don't have answers to what we're gonna do with this proposal because we don't have, um, all the data yet. And we're gonna really try to focus it on data. So that's why we're having the schools come in and tell us, okay, tell us what you think about the impacts will be on the schools actually. Now, you know, it, it's good to hear from people in the letters that we've gotten that, you know, there are certain classrooms and classes that are, um, overburdened, but we, we need data and that's what we're gonna get. So that, what's gonna be the effects on the police and fire? We're gonna ask them and try to get data on that. That's really the best that we can do because there are deep divisions about what's important to different people.
Thank you.
That's federal guidance is the bylaw.
Right, so the master plan, and people have talked about the master plan and the master plan is a great macro tool about what we want to look for in a community. But what we're voting on is not the master plan. What we're gonna vote on is the bylaw. Uh, so especially the special permit criteria. So that's what we're voting on.
Could, I know that you went over this at the start of the meeting and I, I'm not quite clear. Can you tell me the reason a special permit is needed for this is that the. clear, can you tell me, the reason a special permit is needed for this is that the proposal is to, to create on this land in a way that is not currently allowed with zoning, is that correct?
Not, not exactly.
The way I'd like to, there are certain uses under zoning that are allowed by right. So, if you're in a residential district and you've got a house, that's allowed by right, so you don't need a special permit. But under our bylaw, there's certain uses in a district that we would allow, but only by special permit.
Okay.
And this is a use that's allowed by special permit, and that's why I think E.T.A.D. really was very eloquent in explaining the thought process we go through to evaluate whether a special permit is in order or not.
So, they don't require what's called a variance, meaning they don't have to change any, they, they would meet all the laws, right? So, if you go for the zoning board, different board, for a variance, meaning, okay, I don't have the proper setbacks, right? So, they're saying their setback from the residential neighborhood is 50 feet, if that, and it's required to be 35. If it only could be, if it was going to be 30, they'd have to go to the zoning board and say, "Hey, we don't actually meet the laws here, give us some relief."
Okay.
What they're saying here is, we meet the requirements, but because your zoning bylaw says you have to do something extra. You can't just say, "I'm going to build an apartment building." You have to do something extra, you have to come here and prove to us that it's not going to have these certain detrimental effects, that I think Mr. Finnermore talked about, and that we, that we went through in the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
That's what they, that's what has to be proven.
So, if RCG wanted to do something with this land without a special permit currently, housing, what would they be allowed to build? And I think you may have said this at the start of the meeting, and again, I may have missed it. Numbers of homes, types of homes, on this 9.4 acres of-
It's in a hodgepodge of districts, so-
Depends on where on the lot, and frankly, I mean, or if it was under a different law, if it was under, you know, 40B or something like that, that would be a different story. But under the current zoning, depends on where on the lot they built. So, it's our residential 4, it's industrial, so they could build industrial and general business, so it could be certain businesses, certain industrial uses, and then certain, our 4 is certain limited residential, without a special permit.
Okay, and, but do we have a feel for the numbers of residences that could be built without a special permit?
Sure.
I'm just going to expand on what you've stated. So, there's underlying zoning, which is industrial residential, then there's an overlay, which this is under the historic downtown overlay, and under that, by right, and again, not by special permit, are detached one- and two-family residential structures, multifamily dwellings up to six dwelling units, townhouses, mixed-use structures for permitted uses, retail sale establishments, excluding automobile services, restaurants, cafes, food establishments, business offices, professional offices, daycare centers, halls, clubs, places of recreation, veterinarian hospitals, there's a, there's a number of different uses, and this is all available on our, on our town website.
Okay.
More detail, if you look under section 195-18.13. Those are all, again, allowed uses by right without a, without a special permit.
So, I understand that the, the numbers and variety of different things that could be built includes a lot of people, but what I think I just heard you say is that the current zoning would allow for six residences.
No.
No, no, multifamily dwellings, so-
Multifamily dwellings, what is-
Of six apartments, condos, of, up to six.
Six apartments or condos or townhouses.
Like, what, buildings with up to six units in them? And then how many you could put on there depends on how you space them out.
Okay. I'm trying to get a handle on what the current zoning would allow in terms of numbers of bodies on that parcel of land.
It's almost unlimited, because there's so many permutations of what you can do, because there's a bunch of allowed uses.
No, no, I meant in terms of residences, because-
Well, the, the problem is, though, to what E.T.A.D. said, you saw it tonight, it's that you would take the site and you would have to lay it out all over the site, and you would have to respect the setbacks, you would have to respect the wetlands, the roadway, and I don't know, I mean, I understand where you're going with it is, but there's a, you know, I don't know, it could be 50, it could be 75, who knows?
Okay.
I don't think anybody knows.
Okay. So, so I think I'd like to echo what the person who spoke before me said, whose name I, John? I saw him escaping. And thank you, John, for the research and the work that you did to summarize the information the way that you did, and, and restating what I think I heard some of the members of the planning commission say, which is that my understanding, my feeling and my understanding from talking with my neighbors is that we can do math, and 400 parking spaces, 250 units with one, two, four people per unit, in that space, on High Street, with one egress that we share with, that Sutton Pond shares, with that proposed structure, that math is not good for quality of life in North Andover in the mill district. That opinion, anybody sitting here, go ahead and challenge me if I've got it wrong, but I think that opinion is shared by the people who live on these streets, the people on Elm Street, the people on High Street, the people in Sutton Pond complex, the people on Water Street. And while I appreciate that you, Avalon, may have done studies counting traffic coming across the little bridge, and that it is consistent with the number of units in Sutton Pond, again, I can do math. If you introduce 400 to 700 more people right adjacent to our property on the other side, 44 children, that would be one classroom full of Catholic schoolchildren in the 1960s, which was my era, and now it's three classrooms full of children, do I have that right? Who are the parents? 17 kids, you know, two classrooms full.
So-
With nowhere to go. I can tell you where they're going to be going.
Well-
We have Ausgood Pond, we have grassy area, we have geese, that's where they're going to be going. And I think that what the residents of these areas want to understand is that the balance of economic and quality of life is weighed heavily with the understanding of the quality of life as it's reflected by the people who are already residing in that area. Is there a person on our planning board here who resides within a half a mile of Elm, High, Sutton Pond condos, Water Street, Sutton Street?
I don't know that, I don't know that-
A mile radius?
I don't, I don't, well, so, I don't know that we've done the math on that, but I don't think it matters, we all live here and, and-
So, what I-
So, we, so, so, I'm going to, I'm going to try to move on, because we have other people that want to talk.
Okay.
So, just a couple of things. So, we are going, we, we've already talked about the egress from Sutton Pond going through, and I think that's a really good point, and we're going to continue to flush that out, and what can be done to, to help with that. Same with, same with the people coming in over the bridge, I think we already talked about that. The balances, yeah, that, those are the things that we're going to weigh, and in terms of the traffic and then the numbers. But again, just to play devil's advocate, one of the points you made is what can be done there by right, right? A restaurant can be done there by right. So, anything that's going to happen there, and they're, like, I think Mr. Finnermore said, something's going to happen there, so, which will increase traffic. So, we're, we're trying to figure out if this project is appropriate, and if so, at what scale it's appropriate, and as compared to what's there now, and in conjunction with what's there now, and also thinking about what could be there. So, we're trying to think about all those things and do the best we can, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Stephen Whitney, I live at 30 Elm Street, which is the top of Elm Street. And I had just a couple of observations and concerns.
Okay.
I was disappointed that, maybe it's the town's bylaws that don't require affordable housing in these units.
So-
And I was a little disappointed in that fact.
So, I can, I can tell you, so, yeah, we don't have what's called an inclusionary zoning bylaw yet, we're working on it. Again, it's something that has been controversial in the past, and is controversial as part of our master plan, but we're looking into it, we just don't have it yet.
Well, that's encouraging, thank you. The other phrase that keep, kept coming up in your presentation that I heard was "mixed uses," and I was concerned, my concern is, what, you know, down the road, is, does mixed uses include restaurants, include nightclubs, include this, the type of venues that will bring in more-
So, their proposal did not, so, I think when they were talking about mixed uses, they're talking about in the area, in the mills, there's already restaurants and businesses and things like that, their proposal is only residential.
Okay.
There's no, one thing I was saying is that some of our bylaw actually talks about having mixed use, having a retail component on the first floor in this area, so it's asking if that had been considered, as of this point, their proposal is simply residential uses.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
And, so, again, also, to get back to the traffic issue, obviously with progress, you're going to have more traffic. Recently, I would say two to three months ago, we had some wires torn down on our street by a large truck, oversized truck. So, Mark Wilson, who works for the town of Andover, did a, did a traffic study on Elm Street for a week, and the count for a week's worth of traffic was 10,000 vehicles on Elm Street. And this is without any kind of construction going on on High or, you know, so, you know, unfortunately Elm, Davis, and a few other streets in the area are cut-throughs for people to get from 495 to 125 and 133, going, you know, going out towards Amazon, where Amazon will be going out in that area. So, I'm just definitely concerned about the additional heavy, heavy traffic that's going to happen, and, so that's, that's a concern. The other thing, a question I had about snow removal, snow removal, road treatments, and the chemical runoff that's going to happen from that treatment, is that going to be a town thing, or is that going to be handled by the private enterprise?
So, it's a good question, yeah.
Sure. What we would do here is, it would, we would handle our own snow removal on our parking areas, and it's all done, if it's a small snowstorm, we will have small areas on-site where we can store, say, less than an inch or so. Anything more than that would be trucked off-site. I believe that, and I haven't, we haven't been through the Conservation Commission process yet, but I would imagine that the Conservation Commission will require us, because of how close we are to resource areas, to use a certain type of, you know, de-icing materials and not other types of de-icing materials. We've had that in other instances where we're close to wetlands.
And generally, you know, we also talk about, sometimes we talk about conditions of approval with not using certain fertilizers and things like that, especially close to the wetlands.
Yeah, that was my next question about-
Sure.
You know, will you be in compliance with the environmental and town ordinances around-
So, they have to be, so they're going to the Conservation Commission, they've already filed what's called a notice of intent, meaning that they know that they're going to be working in and near the wetlands, and will have to get Conservation Commission approval for whatever they do and stay in compliance with it, so.
Super. Thank you. And the other question, other, well, not a question, but a concern I have, is the duration of the construction of this project, and I think someone brought that up about, you know, can our infrastructure handle the heavy equipment, the trucking, the, and the impact on our local streets, which has already taken a beating from the gas crisis last year and the water main break on, up on Main Street? So, I'm just, you know, that's, that's, I'm hoping that they'll, that you'll address that in some way. And I think that's about it for me.
Great.
Oh, and one more thing, I just wanted to know if you were aware that Sutton Pond has a family of turtles ranging from this size to this size.
I haven't, I haven't seen them, no, I haven't.
So, we'll look for the turtles on the site visit.
I will.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, good turtle talk.
Hi, my name's Jill Angelo Santo, and I live at 41 Pearlie Road, so I have a couple quick questions. One, you talked a lot about the fact that the transportation and access to public transportation through the bus and the train were important selling points to your property. Have you contacted the Transportation Authority to see if the bus can handle the additional people that would be, yeah, or the, to handle the additional people that would be potentially using these?
So, do you, if you said you had a couple of questions, why don't you get out all the questions?
Well, that's, that's my kind of first one. Another question that I had was, it seems to me, and I couldn't quite see, because I was kind of in the back corner, but when you were talking about things like traffic and community impact, you know, I'm right behind the wetlands that, and I face where your project is going to be. And I don't feel like you included this area in your traffic studies or your kind of, kind of more community impact, you included High Street, well, Pearlie Road comes right off of High Street. Getting off Pearlie Road in the morning, traffic times can be difficult, getting off to Sutton can be difficult. Did you include school times? Because I find if I leave within 10-minute difference, I usually leave at 7 o'clock in the morning to go to work, if I leave 10-minutes difference, I hit the middle school, you hit the elementary schools, you get a lot of traffic, a lot of backup. So, looking at all of these factors when you were doing your studies, and just even saying, looking at, see, yeah, Pearlie Road isn't on any of these, or Thorndike, or any of the, the streets in my neighborhood. Also, my neighborhood is all small bungalow houses, and then you're looking at this five-story, five-story building coming. I recently purchased in this neighborhood, I've only been here four months, three months? I don't know if I would have bought my house if I knew this was coming. And I think that's something that is going to impact, you know, the whole neighborhood, is, you know, just being from a newer resident, that, that's something, the property values, the, you know, I just, if I wouldn't have bought this house, then who's going to buy my house when I want to sell it? Or, so, just those are my statements.
So, we'll, we'll probably wait for our traffic study to come back and for their traffic engineer to be here to ask the question, but we'll noted it about the traffic impacts on, study on roads behind the project. So, the question was about, have you spoken with the Transportation Authority or any other agencies about how regional transport-
Met with the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority about the bus access.
Yes.
I think that they're very supportive of more ridership, and I think they said that their bus is probably 50% full right now and has capacity, and that if there was more demand coming, I think their mission is to get, is to support that transit infrastructure, so they would look at doing larger buses, because people would be paying to use those buses. So, I think they were encouraging of the project. They also said that they're looking at modifying the local route that goes to North Andover to make sure that it touched, they're just doing an analysis of that as well, make sure it goes everywhere it should be going. So, we did speak with them, we met with them.
Great, thank you. All right, who's next?
Hi, my name's Ellen Barubi, and I am a resident of Sutton Pond, I'm also the president of the association. I just want to talk about Sutton Pond, not the master plan. We appreciate our relationship with RCG and all of our neighbors, we appreciate your comments and concerns for Sutton Pond greatly. We are definitely in for some impact. We're going to see a real bleed-through with people, vehicles, animals, our quality of life is going to be very affected. I would like to definitely see that we have protection. We need some form of protection, gating, a walkway at the bridge point, and we need protection before construction starts, not after. That bridge is historic, that whole area is very historic. It's not going to support the capacity of any vehicle. You can tell them where to go, and their GPS is bringing them over the bridge.
So, so, can I say about that? So, where would, from your perspective of Sutton Pond, and as the president, I'll have you speak for them, for the community, where ideally would be a gate or a barrier for you? So, you still want people, your, people who live there would want to come over the bridge to be able to park somewhere in between, which would, I'm assuming, which would prevent outflow traffic, correct?
Correct.
Or traffic coming in and getting to the mills and to Avalon, stuff like that?
Our legal counsel has advised us that we are private, we are private from the sign at the point of Main Street all the way down to our stop sign heading towards the egress to High Street. To High Street. We have an architect that lives, that is right at that bridge, where, you know, we have to respect his parking issues, which is sort of behind a granite building.
Yep, okay, yep. So so down.
A gating system would probably be more favorable at that stop sign heading out to High Street. I don't know how it, you know, we could get into the logistics later on the gating system, but we we need something. Making that a walking path. Now here's the other issue.
So on, can you, can you, Monica, can you guys meet with them to see where might be, and maybe with DPW, to where we might think, and then we can, then we can talk with 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 the applicant about it, but talk with them first.
Right, like a site visit.
Yeah, just independently of of us, just to see.
We also had a special permit, and we have a clause on our special permit that states that we have to have two access points for emergency purposes.
Okay.
So why is one hundred and eighty-eight units need two access, but two hundred and fifty do not? And the other part to this is we have a lot of elderly population. We are seeing ambulances, fire, and police at our location very frequently, two to three times a day. Is the development of the, their private way going to allow the congestion? I mean, it still needs to be accessible. I don't believe a fire, a fire truck can actually take the, take the bridge at this point. But it's it's in our special permit. Is the town in the position to amend that special permit where we can make that a walking path at some point? We just, we're we're just.
Yours.
Correct.
Do you have, we can talk about that, but not in not in their permit?
Right, right. So that, we need protection, so we're, we are interested in definitely making a connection there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Hello, my name is Robin Morgeson. I live at one forty-seven High Street. And I I wanna thank John Fillemore, who spoke earlier in the striped shirt. I agreed with every single word that came out of his mouth. So I won't repeat everything he said. I'm just gonna focus on a couple of points. I was looking at the drawings, the pretty drawings with the bright blue sky and the bright green trees, and it looks so nice, except for the fact that it's kind of like Cummings Park in Beverly, just planted right into our neighborhood, in the middle of our neighborhood. It is, seeing the drawings actually made it a little bit more overwhelming to me. And that's without giving you the context of scale, which I think everyone in this room has a concept of the scale of those buildings. So any amount of landscaping, or the trees, or making the road better, really can't negate the size, the massive size of those buildings. You can't smooth them over. You can't smooth that height over. The second point, and I only have three. The second point is the the traffic. We've already talked about the traffic a lot. But the point about how a lot of these residents will be pretty much pedestrians for the most part, that there won't be a lot of car, vehicle use. You know, I live on High Street. I live a block from the restaurants, from the mill buildings, and we walk to, and we walk to the cafe, and we walk to Jamie's, and we walk there all the time. And I also use my car a lot. I also drive up and down High Street and Water Street and Sutton Street many times a day. So yes, you can walk to the restaurant, but that's not everywhere you're gonna be going in the course of a day. So that 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 seemed like not a really good argument. And my last point is about the noise. And, you know, part of this is just the noise in terms of the construction itself over two years, or whatever it's going to be, in a residential neighborhood with a construction project of this magnitude, seems, it seems a little disconcerting. So in addition to John's points, those were my my three comments and concerns. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Nervous Hill. I live at Sutton Pond. Is it possible to bring up slide number twenty-one? Thank you. So actually, maybe it was a slide that had the buildings, with the outlines of the buildings, A and B. Where was that?
It's like press your luck, you gotta hit stop. Hope you don't get a whim.
There we go, thank you. So I'm in, we've been talking a lot about where the buildings are located on the lot, and I've actually gone to some of the other meetings and did, it was nice enough to go over some of those points with me. And I'm in a bit of a unique position about where I'm located in Sutton Pond, but that applies to everyone else in Sutton Pond as well. I'm located right here in this building in Sutton Pond. And this building, because it's a pretty unique challenge, myself along with the Pennetons, own either half of that building. It looks like it's really, really far away from where our unit is located, but if you're actually on the site, having a five-story building located right above your unit there is is pretty oppressive. I had mentioned a few points about maybe is there a way to move the building a little farther back from the lot line, which right now they're saying is only about twenty feet, but it's hovering. So you have five stories, and the the plane of that building there is actually a lot higher than where we're located down as you head closer to the pond, and also to those units that are a little farther in. And they say there's like a much more significant lot line towards the single-family homes on the building B. So we've mentioned maybe if there's a way to have a little bit more delineation of space between building A and Sutton Pond. It's right on top of that lot line, and it's, every single one of those units on the back of that building has a balcony. So that was something that I wanted to make a point of. And I know with all the talk about the parking, is that nobody's mentioned anything about the overflow parking going across the street to the double-decker building. But doesn't that have a lot of parking that goes to the college? Don't they use that for overflow parking? So I'm not sure how all that shared parking will work as well. Something I see the Merrimack College bus going.
I think that other lot is RCG, so I think that would have to, they'd have to make determinations on that.
So really, it's the size and the scope of the buildings being right on top of that lot line. Maybe something could be done with an extra buffer, something with much more mature plantings, because if you actually see it, it's very, very close.
So I think the idea of planting and screenings are always something that we consider. As John said, I think a site visit will be appropriate, and we'll try to go to all the different areas. So people know at a site visit, we can walk around, we can see different things, we can have things pointed out, but we can't have this kind of conversation. We can come back and have a conversation. And we may ask for what's called a balloon test, where we get different aerials based on the project. So the site lines and the, and we'll try to figure that out in the site, with the site visit, and the screening will awful, that'll come up later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Barker. I'm a resident at one eighty-one High Street. I've lived there for thirty years with my wife. I have primarily questions as opposed to comments. They're all, I'll just rattle them off.
Okay.
I'm interested when this new facility is fully occupied, what's the anticipated number of residents that will be there?
Based on the fiscal impact, we have, in the demographic study, we think it's about four hundred and eleven residents, so just over four hundred people.
And how about the number of cars?
You said one point seven per apartment?
Well, it's, it's, the zoning's one point seven three. We think, you know, the four hundred and ten spaces that we have on site is sufficient for our demand, like in a practical point of view, which is, I think, one point six something.
So that translates into about how many cars do you anticipate?
Four hundred and ten.
Okay. And can we compare that to the number of residents in Sutton Mill, and also the number of cars at Sutton Mill?
We don't, but we don't have that information.
Is that some information we could get?
I can't, I mean, we didn't, we did just an aerial, we did a count, and it appears that Sutton Pond is parked at less than one point, one and a half spaces per unit. We think it's about one point four, one point four or five spaces per unit.
We can, we can try to find out that information, but.
Just so that we can sort of get a comparison of.
Just, but it, but the the problem is, is that we can, we can try to get that data, but it may not be an apples-to-apples comparison based on the.
Unit counts.
The type of residences and the numbers of units, not not as such as the number of units, but the types of units at Sutton Pond, whether they're ones, twos, threes, the ages of the people living there, things like that. It may not be apples-to-apples, but we can still try to get the information, see if it helps.
Okay. And how about the same thing for the number of residents and cars on High Street?
You'd have to look at the.
The traffic study has the information as far as the traffic flows on High Street, and our traffic engineer will be here at the next meeting to answer those questions specifically.
The next question I have is, are there any other building, buildings in North Andover that are forced, that are five stories high?
Buildings that are five stories high.
The mills.
The mills.
Portions of the mills are five stories high. Right.
And so, yes, what's gonna be the top height?
Fifty-five feet, which is.
Fifty-five feet, which is what.
And how's that compared to the other buildings in the area?
Based on what RCG is saying, they say that the building at the corner for West Mill.
Can you say seventy?
Seventy feet. So we're shorter than the office building that's on the corner adjacent to our site.
Another thing I'd be interested in knowing more about is, it sounds, it sounds like the people who are employees of that building on the corner are no longer gonna be able to park adjacent to the building in which they work, because that's gonna be occupied by this new development, which I would assume then means that they're gonna be parking across the street. So I think it would be important to understand what kind of impact the pedestrian traffic crossing the street, particularly at rush hour, is gonna have, because I would assume that it's gonna be significantly more than it is now.
We'll take, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. A comment was made by the development team that one of the reasons for choosing North Andover is that it has convenient access to rail, and as far as I'm aware, there's no rail rail service to North Andover. So I don't know whether you're planning on using the rail service that's in Lawrence or Andover, but I don't believe that North Andover has rail service.
I agree with that. I have, this site, though, is very close from a suburban point of view to the Lawrence.
Okay, so, and I think that it would be important to understand, perhaps studies have been done already, to understand what the impact of it, of that's gonna have on Lawrence and their parking facility, if the assumption is that a lot of people are gonna be using that rail service. And then I wanted to point of clarification. I got the impression that you said there's gonna be no significant impact on the community related to the project, and that, to me, is kind of ambiguous. I'm interested to know when you say the project, whether you're referring to the project of building this facility, or whether you're talking, when you use the word project, whether you mean that once it's finally built. Do you understand what I mean?
I don't recall, where I said there was no impact to the community of the development, but.
What, the language that they used was actually language from the special permit criteria about what we need to find about impacts. So it's whether, it's not the construction, it's the project itself.
It's after the construction, they're saying.
Yes.
It's not significant.
Right, that, and that's, I'm not gonna say not significant, but we have, the the special criteria talk about the impact and what. The language they use is really just out of the special permit criteria, that they're gonna meet that. That's what their argument is, and that's why they're, which is what we have to decide.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Anyone else for tonight? Anything else that you want to particularly address tonight?
Just one other comment, just different from this, but I know everyone in the community is planning to come out tomorrow night for the Conservation Commission hearing as well. I wanna let everybody know that we are not going to be presenting. We're gonna be postponed two weeks. So I just didn't want, if anyone had other plans for tomorrow night, don't come to Conservation. They're gonna open the hearing and immediately push us off two weeks to, it's the twenty-fourth.
Okay, that is appreciated. So we are going to continue this hearing until July. Not the sixteen?
No, no, I'm sorry, the sixteen.
July sixteenth. Do we know where that will be?
We have not determined a location yet. Right now, it looks, we just have it scheduled for the Board of Selectmen's Room.
So, okay, so we're gonna continue this hearing until July sixteenth. As of now, it's scheduled to be in our normal hearing spot for the Board of Selectmen. We may move it, i- if we anticipate there'll be this type of people, amount of people coming, we may move it to a different location. So we'll try to figure that out by the end of the week. And, yeah, anything we can, you can do to answer some of the questions and points, and we'll try to dive into some of them in more details. Next week, we will have the, we plan to have the Assistant Superintendent here and really talk about schools. And I'd like to talk about, I'd really like to talk about the fiscal.
Fiscal impact?
Impacts next week. I think the traffic, we'll try to, I'd like to hold off on the traffic and for, until we get our traffic studied back, and so maybe if you could try to have your traffic engineer here on the thirtieth. That, if that works for you guys, that would be great, and that way hopefully we maybe have some more input from our traffic peer review, so we can actually have some meaningful dialogue on that. So I'd really like to, I mean, so when people come next week, if you come, you can talk about anything you want, but I think I'd like to focus on the fiscal impacts, and then try to set some time for site visits and some discussions about the size and scope.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we'll continue until July sixteenth. Thank you. Okay. Take a one-minute recess for anyone who doesn't wanna stick around for our final. Back on, so we're back in. So communications, Commonwealth Mass Census twenty-twenty kickoff. So if 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 everyone could just quiet down out there, thank you. We're still going on just a little bit, non-Avalon business. So in your package and and everyone's online, there's a, the census is coming next year. I don't know if you heard about that in the news, that there's a census. There's a kickoff event hosted by some of our representatives, and they would love to have some of the members of the planning board there, if you can make it. So the information is online and available, okay? Meeting minutes, can we get some motions to approve the meeting minutes from?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from May twenty-first, twenty-eighth, and June fourth, and June eighteenth.
All in favor? Aye. Could we get a, great, great job tonight, everybody, good questions. Got a lot done. Could we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Someday I'm gonna vote no, just to be, okay, great. Good job, guys.